Aaron, can we start?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically by Zoom on September 17, 2025, at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on September 12, 2025, and has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during this declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the municipal website and ought to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Lordy, can you call a roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Dobkin? Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have one case to hear this evening. I'm sorry, I don't have the file. No, wait, I might have it here. I've got too many papers here. So, this is this is 254 Witherspoon Street, Block 8607, Lot 17, in the B1T Zone. Karen, can you tell me the case number?
Oh, sure. It's Z24518.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is a continuation of a previous hearings. We got through a lot of the testimony the last time and I think this time, where we left it the last time is we were at a point where we were going to ask our municipal staff to respond to the presentation of the applicant's experts. But I think before we do that, I think we should have the applicant or the applicant's attorney sort of sum up or at least, you know, bring us up to date on any potential changes based on, you know, the last meeting or just sum up where we were and then we can continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of people that are attendees that should be brought over, our traffic engineer, George Jakomar, our planner, John McDonough, Kelly Osuch, our engineer, and then our landscape architect, Stephen Lederich. I think yeah, I think that's did we get everybody? And then George Jakomar is the last. Okay, great. Okay, thank you, members of the board. For the record, I'm Christopher Degrezia, representing the applicant Witherspoon and Lee LLC. And as Mr. Chair indicated, this is involving 254 Witherspoon. We did go through our witnesses at the last meeting. We talked about many of the themes that I discussed at the beginning of the meeting such as preservation, accessibility, sustainability, and addressing community need. We, since a good amount of time has elapsed since our last meeting, we put together a short presentation to kind of go through and do it for a couple of purposes. One is just to refresh the board, you know, the recollection of where we are and what we're doing. We also provided some additional slides that were focused on questions that were raised either by municipal staff or by members of the board. And lastly, we added a couple of slides to show you the thought process that went behind some of the design, so you get to peek a little bit under the hood. So, Mr. Chair, I think it would make a lot of sense for us to go through that short presentation and then, because we may answer many of the questions and then, you know, then have municipal staff weigh in.
Mr. Degrezia, you want this then to be a new exhibit since you said you had?
It will be, yes, yes. We would mark it as Exhibit A2.
All right, and do you have an idea how many slides you have?
It sounds high, but it's 80, but it goes by real quickly. Some of them will be there and just like flashes.
It is high.
Yeah.
And one more question. I believe all your experts were sworn in at our last hearing on this, except they don't remember Mr. Lederich was present. So if he does provide testimony, we will swear him in.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, unless you have any questions or direction, I'd like to pull up our first witness. Okay, all right. We're gonna, we're gonna start with Josh Zinder, who is the architect of record, also the tenant that is currently occupying the building today with his offices. And Josh was sworn in and qualified as an expert architect.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen.
Mr. Degrezia, does the Board Secretary have a copy of this Exhibit A2?
We can send it to you.
Yeah, we're gonna need that, yeah.
Yeah, of course. Okay, thank you for having us back tonight. As a reminder, the existing Colonial Revival Structure at 254 Witherspoon in the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood has been occupied by our office since June 2021. Our proposal is for a two, two-and-a-half-story addition to the existing two-and-a-half-story structure. We have a presentation today with some additional information and some clarifications based on your questions last time. We do have the previous presentation as well, if you need to reference back to it for any reason. As a reminder, the focus of this project is to maintain the historic asset, excuse me, to maintain the historic asset, the Annete V. Taylor House, contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood, provide community support elements, provide universal accessibility to the building uses, create a model for sustainability in Princeton, and create a highly contextual structure utilizing form, scale, and materiality of the neighborhood. We reviewed this before, but I want to be clear, it is our intent to preserve the legacy of Annette V. Taylor and her family by doing whatever we can do to restore and preserve this structure, which is why we have been so careful and thoughtful with our design and why we have complied with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Places on this project. As mentioned previously, and as was requested by HPC, we will be working with the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic and Cultural Society to install a historic marker that recognizes Annette V. Taylor, her family, and the structure. As we discussed, the site within the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District is a 28-minute walk to the only laundromat in town at the Princeton Shopping Center. We reviewed our survey results previously, which clearly show the need for the laundromat. And if you don't believe the surveys, you need only walk the streets between Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood and the shopping center to see people walking and riding with their laundry across town every day. Here are other survey results. In response to some of the questions that were raised last time about who would use a laundromat in this location and the notion that people who have washers and dryers in their apartments would not use a laundromat, we've done some further research. This research shows that 87% of laundromat users are within a mile of their location. 10% of all laundromats business is bedding blankets and sheets, which typically cannot be washed in apartment washing machines. Laundromats wash and fold services represent 30 to 40% of their overall income. In the Northeast, there has been an increase in demand for wash and fold services, 73% year-over-year the last few years. Finally, a location close to a large apartment complex is a primary factor in laundromat usage. Also remember, there is another apartment complex coming to the neighborhood on Franklin Avenue very soon. Here you see the building as it currently exists with a slight yellow stucco hue. Here is the Lee Avenue streetscape with repeating gables roofline and the large four-and-a-half-story Avalon Bay Apartments on Witherspoon Street. And here you see our project acting as a transitional structure to the larger-scale structures on Witherspoon Street. Here you see the diagram of the property which we showed previously and with the existing building on the site. Over the last four years, we have been working on the project. We have studied many design schemes. When we started down this path, we pursued alternative designs, some of which we showed you last time, and as previously mentioned, we have had them reviewed with Elizabeth Kim, Historic, and other staff during that process. This first diagram series will illustrate one of the earlier designs to address some of the comments which previously arose and explain why the design as presented represents the best solution. The fire inspector, as we previously noted, requires us to have a second means of egress off of the attic level of the existing building. This floor has always been occupied even when Annette V. Taylor lived in the building and when the previous office users occupied it as well. To not impair the structure, we need to tap the window, the existing window, for the egress connection. It must be this side window as the other side of the building has the only driveway access and placing it in front of the building would overly burden the view of the historic structure. And if it were placed in the back, it would further restrict the parking. So we added a two-and-a-half-story stair tapping into that window. We wrapped it in the glass, we wrapped it in glass as a hyphen to separate the old structure from the new building to make the connection and to get the stair to work, the hyphen needed to be taller and closer to the front of the existing building than we previously had shown you in the scheme that we previously showed. We added the laundromat. We added the contextual forms and the studio. Here you see the components together. But in this previous design, we had a lower addition height, but a taller hyphen stair. Our concern was that this was a visual intrusion on the historic structure and not a successful hyphen. It was more of a tower that imposed itself on the existing structure and it would have required a height variance substantially taller than the existing building. In addition, we need to have rooftop mechanical and this rooftop mechanical would have had to go on top of the main roof, which would have been taller than the solar panels, the most likely viewed from below. Okay, so now back to the existing building and our current design. Here's the lot that we're starting with. We added the large glass hyphen that we previously had and we shifted it back, which meant we no longer could have the stair going up to the attic level. We reduced the height of the hyphen notably along Witherspoon Street Edge. We made the most minimal connector we could to reduce the impact on the house. We pulled the connector below the existing roof. This still allows us to egress off of the attic level by exiting through our new addition. Also, by not connecting the stairs to the attic level, it allowed us to conceal any rooftop mechanical if needed behind the hyphen. As noted previously, the gray change along Witherspoon Street allows access from the street to the basement level of our building, which is where the laundromat will go. We added the contextual forms connecting these elements. We have our studio tying it all together. As mentioned, our discussions with Elizabeth Kim led us to raise up the solid facade and open it up with more glass effectively pulling back the curtain of the facade to allow for a clearer view of the historic structure and a lightening up of the facade. Here you see the entire massing of the proposed building. As we've mentioned previously, we looked at many options for the site, including taking advantage of the AH07 affordable overlay, looking at mixed-use housing, office, retail, laundromat solutions for the site. These did not work with our office and apartments together. This solution was a 10-unit apartment structure above retail and laundromat space, which was compliant with the Affordable Overlay zoning. And looking at these two solutions in comparison, our design is substantially smaller than the potential three-and-a-half-story, 45-foot-tall housing solution, which would be compliant with the AH07. In addition, there is no front setback in the overlay, which would allow construction to extend all the way to the sidewalk.
And Josh, the parking requirement would only be five spaces?
Five spaces, yeah. I'm gonna get to that a little bit later as well. Here you see the existing site plan. And with our proposal for the site, you can see the open space plaza we are creating at the corner. You can see our proposed shared parking spot with the combined drive with our neighbor. We have met with our new neighbor and they have signed the parking LOI agreement that we had with the previous neighbor. We are aware that we will need an easement in place to meet the compliance requirements for this project. This easement is in both of our best interests. You can also see the slope surface, which will provide accessible entry to all tenancies. Remember, it is not a ramp which would require handrails, it is a slope surface. One thing to note with regard to the American with Disabilities Act is that it is not just for wheelchair users, but also for people who are otherwise impaired. The parking solution that we are recommending with the ADA spot on the inner corner will provide easier access for those who need access to the stairs to our office as well. We believe this ADA parking solution does meet the intent of the ADA and is an overall safer solution. Here you see the landscape plan. Our landscape architect is with us tonight. If there are questions, we can address them at the end. However, we will be working with the Town Arborist and Landscape Architect to address all the issues that the town's landscape architect and environmental commission raised. The laundromat will be at the basement level of the building. As mentioned, we currently have an LOI for a tenant to take occupancy and a backup laundromat company that has expressed interest in the space. Since our July meeting, we have had two additional companies that have expressed interest and would like to rent the space.
And Josh, just for the record, that was Slide 36 and we're moving on to, I'm sorry, that was 36 and now we're moving to 37.
Yeah, Slide 37. Here you see the first floor with a future tenant and the first floor of our office. Slide 38, the second floor, is part of our studio space.
Josh, can you go back to the last slide just real quick? I just want to point out something because I noticed it, it's nice, the slide before that. One of the things that we talked about when we were doing the FAR discussion is the covered porches that wrap around. You could see how large they are and that is also included in the calculation of floor area, even though it's not, you know, otherwise usable space, as well as the galleries in the conference room and the many amenities like the kitchen there. And I think the next floor has a meditation space. So, that was all part of what the planner talked about in terms of the FAR, but I wanted to point it out here because I thought it was a good visual on that slide.
Yep. And actually you see them below here, the porches as well. So now 39, for reference. This is where we have the store, the, excuse me, this is where we have the stairs in our current hyphen design. It allows access up to the second floor, at which point you would take the stair that's in the studio space up to the attic level. This is where the stair and hyphen would have to be if it were continued up to the attic level. It would also be about five feet closer to Witherspoon Street, as I previously mentioned. On the mezzanine attic level, the connector and the mezzanine ceiling height, we expect to be at code minimum ceiling height of seven feet clear. This will allow us to keep the new building no taller than the existing structure. So the ceiling height in here will be most likely seven feet or at whatever the bare minimum is permitted by code. We could reduce the square footage of the mezzanine by 304 square feet, which was questioned last time. However, it would not reduce the height of the building as we need the ceiling height for egress access to that stair. We believe the full mezzanine, as previously shown, works better and is a more functional design with the full floor plate. The benefit of this reduction is minimal as it does not reduce the volume of the building or eliminate the FAR variance. You can also note that the ceiling of the room below, which we use as the floor of the mezzanine, by having that floor space, it provides more flexibility for the office. So you see the ceiling and then this provides additional flexibility for the office. Here you see the roof plan with the green roofs and the solar panels. In looking at the elevation of Witherspoon Street and Lee Avenue, you can see the green ground cover on the slope between the pitched walkway surfaces. HPC had requested we maintain the height of the existing porch railing and we have modified the design to do just that.
We're on 44, moving to 45.
Right, so now we're on 45. Here you see the rendering with the glass hyphen as recommended by the Secretary of Interior Standards of Historic Places when adding to a historic structure. 46. As I mentioned, we hope to make this structure net zero and a model for sustainability in Princeton. We have set the solar panels back on the roof, so they will not be seen from Lee Avenue. We have reduced the overhang per HPC's request while still screening the solar panels from across the street on Witherspoon Street. The space between our neighbor and our new building will be much greater than the contextual gaps that exist along Lee Avenue. All the components of the building, both existing and new, will be significantly set back from the prevailing face of the street facades. In addition, the porches on the existing and new porch are set back from the predominant porch line. The overhang represented to HPC had aligned with the porch below. As mentioned, we pulled this back. The addition is respectfully set back from the street. Slide 51. The fact that the rock outcropping occupied the corner of the lot clearly led to the location of the original building. Placing a structure on the corner would have been more contextual, appropriately characteristic for the era and viable for the original use. This would have provided a protected lawn instead of one out on the corner. It would also have set up the ability to subdivide and to add another structure in the future if you were not for the rock. The property could have been divided into two lots in the current business zone or three in the adjacent residential zone. There were questions previously about the that the fire official had expressed and we have talked with him and these are the resolutions that we've come to. New Jersey IBC, the building code does not require a fire sprinkler system for a B occupancy at this size or location, nor does the rehab code require it for the alteration to the existing building area or change of use for the future tenant area. As the laundromat is the source of the greatest concern, we plan to provide an NFPA 13 fire suppression system in the laundromat area. The laundromat area will be separated from the adjacent basement area and the office above by a one-hour fire protective barrier. The existing north exterior building wall will have a one-hour fire rating and new interior stairs will have a complete one-hour fire enclosure. So those were what we discussed with the fire official.
And that complies with current code, correct?
And this complies with current code, correct.
Thanks.
Slide 53. We've covered all the variances last time, so I will only touch on the singular parking variance. Please remember, most of our staff parks at the lot across the street already, which has hundreds of available spaces. The path to make this parking compliant would be to take advantage of the AH07 affordable housing overlay with 10 apartments, a laundromat, and retail. This would have no FAR requirement and a much larger building envelope than we are proposing, but the parking would be compliant. Our office parking is a low impact. We do not park on Witherspoon Streets, nor do our visitors. As the laundromat and retail are permitted uses in the overlay, it is our office which is the differentiator, not the retailer laundromat demand. And we have resolved all the parking for our staff. Here is the overall context from above. Here you see with the new structure and its relationship to the parking lot a block and a half away. Looking at the site from above the corner as it currently exists and with the new addition. Here you see the existing site looking down Witherspoon Street and with the new addition. Here is the existing closure on Witherspoon Street. And with the addition, as previously discussed, we have updated the image to address the HPC concerns, pulling back the awning and changing the railings. You can also see here the historic plaque we will be installing to acknowledge the history of the Taylor family and building. And also, please note that we didn't Photoshop out the air conditioners, but we won't have window air conditioners in the final project. Here you see the view down Lee Avenue and with the new addition. Here is a closer view from down Lee Avenue and with the new addition. So we're on Slide 65. Here you see the same view on Slide 66 with transparency on the existing trees which are being maintained. You can see the gable roofline we are including in our design to connect with Lee Avenue context. As a reminder, we are aligning the planter wall with the existing wall that runs down the side of Lee Avenue. We can push this wall back, but we believe is a better solution than stepping it back and more contextual and recognize that we will need to have a right-of-way agreement with the town if that is approved tonight.
Yeah, so as it's proposed, just Josh, just for a second there, as it's proposed, it lines up with the existing structures down the street. If we do it with the municipal boundary line and push it back, you basically have a sidewalk and then a little strip of grass and then smaller planters, which we think from a visual standpoint would be much worse.
And it's also, you can also note in the upper left, the existing foliage, even when it is trimmed back, which is what this is, overhangs that sidewalk, so our new condition will provide greater pedestrian space for walking even when we align it with that wall that continues down the street. Slide 67. As I mentioned, we engaged Hunter Research to do a historic report on the property and to look at our proposal. In looking at the design approach, it is clear that this project is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Places. And I won't get through all of the text here, but Slide 68. We believe this proposal will promote community-oriented tenants in the laundromat, our office, and a future tenant as well. The addition fits well and is respectful of the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District and complies with the Secretary of Interior's Guidelines for Historic Places. History does not stop, we are continually making it. The buildings in town reflect that history and are markers for how things change. Our town's landscape is a quilt of that history. This project is appropriate to the scale and materiality of the context and is respectful of the past while not creating a false sense of history today, while enriching the visual landscape of tomorrow with uses that the community needs. The project is sensitive to the historic character, the contributing structure, will support the well-being of the neighborhood and Historic District. It promotes the conservation of a contributing structure within the Historic District, engages sustainability practices and resources. It is appropriately scaled for the property. It incorporates the best features of It incorporates the best features of design to create a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. We hope you find our proposal and the use to be compelling and a valuable addition to the fabric of our community. Thank you. Now we're going on to our civil engineer. Chris?
Yeah, so, um, we're gonna bring up Kelly Osuch, who was, uh, sworn in before and qualified. Kelly, are you there?
I am.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you so you can go through a few slides that, um, I, I think, I, I just, maybe I just should, should say this, that, um, after the first meeting, we met, uh, with, uh, Dan, to discuss, uh, the town's engineer, to discuss the, um, some of his comments. And one of the things he asked us to do was take a look at the A D A parking in the rear and to look at scenarios with a different location. So one of the things that Kelly is gonna go through is some of the analysis that we did, uh, based on Dan Weisman's, uh, suggestions.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Josh. Um, so we're on sheet seventy of the, uh, slide deck here. Um, and what's before the board on this illustration is just the proposed site plan as it's been filed and presented to the board to date. Um, and namely, as part of this conversation today, uh, the focus is on that A D A stall that Mr. Drazia was referring to. And namely that we have the A D A stall in the rear right corner of the parking lot area. Specifically, our position is that is the correct location. Um, and I'll get into why we believe it is the correct location and kind of the design process, both before we um, presented to the board and after we presented to the board and met with Dan and went through some alternative layouts. Uh, Josh, can you go to the next slide? Okay, it's sheet seventy-one. So thi- this is illustrating what the current parking layout is proposed as part of the filed set of plans. Uh, and from left to right here, there are six physical parking stalls. Uh, the first four from the left to the right are nine foot wide. And, uh, all stalls are eighteen foot deep. After the first four nine-foot-wide stalls, there's an eight-foot-wide compact stall. That eight-foot-wide stall requires a design waiver for the width being substandard. After that eight-foot-wide stall, we have an eleven-foot-wide A D A van accessible stall. And then associated with that is a five-foot-wide clear space for uh, anyone utilizing the A D A stall to allow them to get in and out of the van, um, in a clear area. In addition to that, there's the stair coming off of the porch area in the rear that requires, uh, a clear space associated with the, the egress of the stair and this five-foot-wide path in this layout. Um, or five-foot-by-clear space is, uh, meeting the, the, the clear space for both the A D A stall and the, the stairwell. Um, in this layout, there's only one stall, the eight-foot-wide stall that is substandard in sizing per the ordinance required. We go to the next slide. This is sheet seventy-two. This is an alternative layout that we came up with following our discussion with Mr. Weisman. And the cons, the whole context of the conversation was moving the A D A stall closer to the driveway, which shortens the length to the sloped walkway in the front. Now, in doing this, we still have the same sixty-foot-wide area from left to right to work with. However, in doing that, we now have an eight-and-a-half-foot-wide stall, an eight-and-a-quarter-foot-wide stall, the five-foot-wide required clear space associated with the A D A stall, the eleven-foot-wide van accessible stall. And then again, two eight-and-a-half-foot-wide stalls and a seven-and-a-half-foot-wide stall. And then an additional two-point-seven-five-foot-wide clear space associated with that um, stairwell coming down, which is the minimum required clear space associated with a landing at the, the end of the stairs. So you can see from this layout, all of the, I'll call them conventional parking stalls are now much more narrow than what is being provided in the proposed plan that we believe is the correct layout. In addition to that, instead of asking for a design waiver on one parking stall, we're asking for it on five parking stalls. Uh, because the width is substandard. The only standard quote-unquote parking stall in this layout would be the A D A stall and that has to meet the federal requirements for width to be, uh, compliant. Uh, so if we go to the next slide, Josh?
And just for the record, it's seventy-three?
Thank you, Chris. So just kind of going next to each other and, and again, looking at both of these layouts. It's clear in my mind that the, the proposed parking layout as we have it is the correct layout. It meets the A D A standards and it meets the general intent of the A D A code. The alternate layout would be more narrow for all of these parking areas in a already narrow and not a highly maneuverable parking lot. So adding width and Mr. Jack Mar is gonna be speaking to this in a, a few minutes, but adding width to the parking stalls allows for better maneuverability in and out of the parking areas. So when you have substandard drive aisles to back out, the wider you can make the stalls, the better. So again, we think the proposed parking layout that we have on the plans currently is the right one. But we wanted to show the board this alternate layout so they could understand why we're placing or why we were designing the A D A stall in the location that we were along with the other, um, parking stalls.
Yeah, a- as part of the analysis, we're allowed to look at undue burden in practicality. And when we look at the safety and circulation, that is all part of the analysis. Um, so that's why we believe that this fully complies, our, our proposed plan.
And before, before we go too far, I, if there was still concern from the board and their professionals in regards to the path from the A D A stall going down the driveway, w- we would, the applicant would be okay with working with the board and its professionals on placing some type of mirror or visual, uh, aid to reduce any concern um, and add to that safety that Mr. Drazia is noting. In addition, separate of the parking, there was one comment that Dan had noted that I did not touch on in the last hearing in regards to the lighting. Um, and specifically, the timing of the lighting. The applicants proposing to have all the site lighting, uh, on a motion detector and not on a physical timer, so they would go off at night and the only way they would be on is if motion triggered them.
Thank you. Um, I think we switch, uh, Kelly, you finished?
I am finished now.
Okay, and our last, um, uh, our last, uh, witness for the last couple of slides is Jean Jacamar, George Jacamar. Um, he's our traffic consultant and, uh, George, are you here?
Yes.
George, you were previously sworn in, you still remain under oath and you were qualified for the record.
Okay, thank you very much and good evening. I will show, uh, in the next few slides how, uh, each of the, uh, layouts, uh, for the parking arrangement that Kelly just discussed uh, does work, how it works in terms of vehicles getting in and out. So here we're looking at the layout that was, um, kind of suggested as a result with the meeting with Mr. Weisman. Where the, you can see the, uh, A D A space is towards the left in the parking lot. And here you can see the, a vehicle entering, um, the first parking space, that's not a shared space. Um, the blue maneuver, the blue lines show the vehicle going in the forward, uh, maneuver and then the red lines, it shows the vehicle backing out and then exiting. And you can see that, um, and this is the, the tight space, the eight space and twenty-five, eight-point-twenty-five feet. Um, the fact that it's aligned with the driveway and it's adjacent to this access area to the uh, A D A space, you know, makes it a little bit easier to get in and out, you know, to overcome that narrowness of that particular space, so uh, y- you can see it, it's tight, but it works. And I, I wanna mention, in all the um, maneuvering, uh, that we show you, we assume that the maneuvering will happen on our site. It will not happen on the neighbor's site. Uh, although that will be allowed once that easement is in place. Uh, the vehicles can back out into the neighbor's site and the neighbors' vehicles can back into our, uh, site as well. The next slide shows then the same maneuvers for the A D A space. Uh, and again, you can see the red line here, how the vehicle can take advantage of this access area to start turning much earlier to get a sharper turn, you know, to revert in the reverse maneuver, the red lines and then exit, eh, according to the blue lines that I've shown here. Next space then, this is then spaced, the third space here, that is an eight, uh, eight-and-a-half-wide space for a standard vehicle. There you can see the vehicle backing out, you know, the blue line going in that works and the vehicle backing, backing out the red line and has to do two maneuvers to get out, you know, so that particular space, um, it's, it's workable, but it, it, it would take two maneuvers. Again, that's assuming that the maneuvering happens all on our side. Um, you know, with obviously the, uh, easement on the neighbor's side that will be, uh, easier than what's shown here. The next one is a similar maneuver as before. Um, you know, the vehicle would, if, if the maneuvering happens on our side, the vehicle has to do a, a, a back and forth uh, to get out. And then the last one is the, uh, that's the compact space. You can see the compact car has a little bit more corner to kind of pull out of the space. And is also using the access area, you can see the blue line, the red line on the red kind of taking advantage of that access area, uh, to, to, to go up to that staircase. So that one, the compact vehicle works relatively well, although it's all, uh, relatively tight. So what happens here is because these spaces will only be used by the employees of the architecture office. And so these people, they know the parking spaces, they, they know how to get in and out, um. I think the last slide shows the manu- maneuvering. So this is the proposed layout where the A D A space is on the right. You can see, you know, the wider access area of five feet, which satisfies both the access to the A D A space and the access to the staircase. And there again, the A D A vehicle can move in and out, uh, of that corner area to, uh, maneuver back to the street. So that's all my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding this parking and regarding any transportation, traffic question that may come up. Thank you.
So just, just to summarize, um, based on our proposed plan and the plan that, uh, Dan asked us to, Dan Weisman asked us to take a look at and evaluate. They both physically could work as George, uh, went through and, and shown. However, when we shift the A D A space over a little so that it's on the right side, this clear space serves three purposes. It actually enlarges the stairwell clear space, so it, it's nice and wide there. It also allows us not to separate the stairwell space, so we gain a couple of feet there. And it, um, it's, um, overall will allow us to, um, you know, utilize that for those three functions, for the stair, for the, for the, um, I'm sorry, the stair for the clear space for the A D A van. And also it pulls the car off of the end of the lot. So when you do your K-turn or you back up and go out, it's a lot easier to maneuver because if your car is right on that line or nearer or closer to the part, the edge of the, the lot, you're not gonna have as much maneuverability. So we think, um, it severely decreases the function of the parking lot, more difficult to get in and out. And it, um, also, as shown through the slides, reduces the other stalls so that they're all at least eight-point-five or smaller and not nine-foot wide as we initially proposed. So. And I think so, like I said, it was a long, uh, many slides, eighty, but it, it, it didn't take too long to go through. So, uh, Mr. Chair, that's our, that's our presentation for tonight. Uh, we do have all of our consultants that testified, and I know there was a lot more information in the last meeting. We went through a lot more detail. This, like I said, was just kind of a broad overview. But we do have, um, the three witnesses you saw tonight. We also have our planner, our landscape architect. And we're here to, uh, respond to and answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board members, do you have any questions of the three presenters or Mr. Drazia? Yes, uh, Michael?
Yeah, re- regarding the, um, the neighbor at two forty-six Witherspoon. Um, and the, um, I guess letter of intent type thing that was signed. What, what are, what are the specifics of that letter?
I'm not, I'm not sure if we hand it in, but I could tell you like real quickly, the, the key paragraphs. We have shared use of parking spot. So during the weekdays, eight A M to six P M, um, the office will use the space. After that, the homeowner will be able to use that shared space. Um, we have maneuvering and access. The parties agree that the cars parked on either property shall have the reasonable right to enter the neighbors' portion of the parking lot in order to maneuver in and out of parking spaces. And then we have accessibility path. Um, the public, the parties agree that an accessible path from the proposed handicap parking space to the public right-of-way will be located using the driveways from both properties in order to create an accessible path with the mildest slope. And then it goes through a couple other terms in terms of maintenance and cost and insurance that you would typically see in a letter of intent. But clearly, it, it addresses the shared parking maneuverability, um, accessibility. And we believe, as we said, the additional space and the great benefit of circulation really is a huge benefit to both the residential property and ours. In our property, we have a lot more maneuverability. So as you, as we showed in those diagrams, we could back in and out and kind of turn around. But the residential lot does not. They basically have to pull in and then pull back up right into the street backwards, which is not really desirable. So it's a, it's a huge benefit to both properties.
Unless they use our property to turn around.
Oh, yeah, unless they can use our, yeah, well, that's, I'm saying if they had to stay on their side, um, it would be, it would be, they would just have to pull back out, but with the use of our property, they could turn around and then head out to, um, the road facing forward.
Um, follow-up, uh, questions. Um, does it also a- address the basically length of the easement? And does it address, um, rights of termination?
In the L O I, it doesn't, it doesn't talk about those things, but it would be the intent that the easement would be, you know, um, part of both of our deeds, so it would require, it would continue with the length of both properties.
Well, unless, unless they insisted it be short.
No, but then that, that wouldn't work. It has to be part of the, it has to be deed restricted.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's why I was curious about that. Both those questions because we're being asked to consider basically the enforceability um, of this particular variance. You know, solution to the variance. That's, that's, those are kind of standard legal type things to consider. So, um, I, I understand you can't answer those right now.
Well, part of the challenge, the reason why we did the L O I was because was because we wanted to be able to move forward with this. But we understand that this needs to be in place for us to move forward with the project. That way, you know, we don't have to hire lawyers to do all that legal work if you guys aren't going to improve it.
And, and the third paragraph does say the definitive agreement is intended to be used for perpetual duration. If deemed appropriate and necessary, the parties will have an easement prepared and recorded to document this agreement, which is what we're going to do. And we've already indicated to this board that having it as a condition is acceptable to us.
Michael, okay, go ahead. Okay, Michael, do you have anything else?
Um, why don't you let George go? I have wanted to, not related.
George?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the two different parking arrangements, which I found that the original one that the applicant designed to be vastly preferable to the alternative in terms of the, the narrowness of the particular parking slots and the maneuverability compared with the alternative. So that's just a comment.
I had, I had a question, Michael, then I'll give you this voice again here. The distance, the spots are eighteen feet deep. What's the distance between the spot to the building behind, to your existing building?
The, the minimum width is sixteen and a half feet, and that would not change in either scenario.
So you have an eighteen, eighteen-foot space and a sixteen and a half-foot space behind it?
Drive aisle, yes.
Yeah, what's the minimum? I guess we can ask our engineer, what's the minimum drive aisle required?
The typical standard for a two-way is twenty-four feet wide. But this is a existing condition. Actually, it's actually improving the existing condition because we're adding a few more feet to the length of the driveway for the parking area.
Yeah, there's, there's.
And the aisle itself is, is expanding by a couple inches, although it's pretty much what it is today.
The aisle is expanding by about a foot and a half.
A foot and a half, okay.
Yeah, it's, it will be.
I thought it was closer.
There's a, a large wisteria bush in that location right now. And the bollards at the back of the building will be closer to the building than the wisteria bush.
So, yeah, I mean, there's a big difference between sixteen and a half and twenty-four. I understand, I understand the existing condition. I'm just, that's just a statement. Do, I have my concern and I share George's opinion. It requiring those, the first scheme, you can drive straight in. The others, it looks like the car has to go in at an angle. You're showing us a narrow space and the car going in at an angle, and that's going to be a little tricky. I mean, when you have cars next to one another, one guy's required to come in slightly at an angle and the other isn't or whatever. It just seems to be a little bit of a difficult parking situation, but I understand the existing conditions you're dealing with. So just a comment. Michael, do you want to continue?
Um, yeah, a question about the LOI with the interested parties, with the laundry, laundromat. And we, we talked about obviously the regular laundromat self-service, wash, wash and fold, you know. Any other type services the people you're talking to are talking about providing?
Um, yeah, so they are, the person we have the LOI with has talked about putting drop lockers there. So people could do Amazon pickups and things like that, that the community might need. The laundromat will also use those drop boxes for people who might pick up after their staff has left. They'll tell somebody to, you know, they'll text them to say, pick up your laundry in locker number fifteen. And, you know, so there is that, there is that ability. And, and, you know, the, the person who has the LOI with us has talked about it as a community-based, you know, location. So there will be Wi-Fi and other things like that, that, that would, you know, serve the community that's using the laundromat.
So Josh, I was fine with everything until you just said Amazon Dropbox.
Well, it's not technically, I mean, it's not technically an Amazon Dropbox. It is a drop-off locker that is commonly being used in a lot of apartment buildings these days. And it's used by many different delivery services, drop-off services. The laundry uses it because they want to be able to transfer the laundry so that they can provide the service. If, if their staff leaves, you know, that does the wash and fold for the day, that they can make sure that the person gets their stuff as it gets after work hours.
Yeah. I really wish you hadn't said Amazon Dropbox. What do we know about?
You know, wants to have that, we'll take it out, but that is.
Josh, how many, what information do we have? I mean, this is a tight street. What information do we have about Amazon trucks going up and down the street multiple times a day? Increased traffic to the building to pick up Amazon deliveries? Do we have any information on that?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there would be any increased traffic. Amazon comes to our office daily. And, and I'm not sure there's any significant impact that anybody's noticed on it. And I don't know that it's going to be accessible to Amazon. It is intended to be a delivery location, so maybe only during working hours. I don't know, I'd have to talk to the tenant about that in detail. And certainly if that was something that, that this, this board felt was prohibitive, we could eliminate it from their, from their scope. It is a very useful tool for not just the laundromat, but also for the residents in the walkable neighborhood around us.
I, I think, you know, and a concern is, will it generate any automobile traffic? Or how much am I, you know? The, the traffic is, is an issue. So I, I can understand why Harlan immediately focused on that. So, you know, the, the number of services being provided where I want the business to be successful and whatnot. It's things they're taking into consideration. You know, even the wash and fold will generate some drive-up business as well. Um, I don't know how much. And you, you say you researched as far as dollar-wise, it's, it could be thirty to forty percent of, of, of dollar business. But there's no testimony from your traffic consultant how much vehicle traffic it may generate. I, and I have no idea, and our consultant in here. So that's, that's, that is a, a little bit of, of a concern. I wasn't quite, and my last question, I wasn't quite sure. You mentioned the Franklin, the future Franklin Avenue development? And, and your point on that was, was what?
Just that it's an apartment building close by this location. And even if there are washers and dryers in the apartments, typically linens and bedding and stuff like that wouldn't work in a tenant's apartment.
Yeah.
And, and so we would be just another resource for that apartment building as well. And that, you know, the most successful laundromats are directly adjacent or near apartment complexes. So that's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
So, so Michael, if I may, some of that data that we put in there to try to explain was why we had talked about, you know, the, the massive number of units across the street at Avalon and how we think there will be something generated from that. So like the wash and serve service, you know, somebody over there, I don't know who, just, you know, say a young professional drops off their laundry, goes to work, comes back at eight at night, goes in, opens up the locker, takes their, and walks across the street. That's what it's intended to. So when you have those larger apartment complexes, whether they're using the wash and fold service or doing their bedding and, you know, beach towels there, it's, it's something that these laundromats look for in terms of location. So that's why we were saying it's having those type of facilities nearby is great. And then we also have all of the people that are walking and riding from the neighborhood, which is the, the focus of why we thought about putting the laundry back here in the first place.
Good, thanks.
I have one more question on the, on the parking situation. In the agreement you read, Mr. Degrzija, you said that the tenant, the house tenant has parked, is allowed to park during the week after hours, four hours in it. So during the day, if the apartment, if the house tenant is ill, he has no place to park.
No, they have two parking spots. This is the third.
One, one at a time.
Oh, sorry, Steve. So the, the residence is the neighbor, they have their own parking spots. So if you go down their driveway, they stack them so they could have one or two parking spots and they got to pull in and out. By having an easement with us, instead of, you know, they're still stacked on their side, but after hours, they could pull in and use that additional spot.
They have spots during, they have their stack parking during the day.
Correct.
To be, to be clear, they have more than stack parking. They have two full parking spots right now on their property. This provides them with a third parking spot, okay? And so, and so the reality is they have young kids, the previous family had young kids as well. This allowed them to, you know, as, as, you know, if they had an au pair or if they had something like that, you know, or somebody helping with them during.
Fine, I, I understand, I understand. You, you answered my question.
Right.
Okay, I'm trying to move it along. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I, I know you are. Something I dropped, jotted down earlier. That part, parking chart that you put up, which you didn't really walk through and I didn't really focus on with the line-for-line specifics. So could you put that back up and, you know, educate us on?
So I mean, I talked about that last time, that's why I didn't go through it again. But I will, let me pull it up here and I can share my screen. Yep, there it goes. So, share screen. This, this, this chart here?
Yes.
Okay, so, so currently there's, we're, we're in this calculation A, okay?
Yes.
And, and we're providing ten spaces in a technical term because we're providing electric charging spaces in the parking lot. So from a technicality, we have ten spots, even though there are, are physically six, okay? That's, that's what, what's counted. In the, in the B district, so if we were one property over, okay? So instead of being in the B, if we were in the, the MMRO or the RB, one property over in any direction, okay? We would have a requirement of seventeen spaces because it's the borough calculation versus the township calculation. Now, the township calculation for fifty-three spots is really a reflection of this B1 zoning, which is really created to be in more of a spot like down on two oh six that you have to drive to. Okay, we are, we are walkable, you know, in our location and, and that is, is the intent. So in the borough, we would be required to have seventeen spaces. So it's a, really a much lower variance that we're looking at here, okay? And if we were to take on the overlay and say not put our office here, but still put a laundromat, still put retail and put ten apartments here, we would be compliant. And, and so that's what we're saying. We're basically saying that it's our office that's the issue, not the other uses because that, those are compliant uses within the overlay that wouldn't require any parking. Okay, so our office is what's, what's throwing it off. And we cover all of our staff already, you know, in the five spaces that we will, will have, plus the vast majority of our staff parks in the parking garage across the street.
Yeah, I guess, um, that helped me because I didn't focus on what actually was your point. Now the, maybe this is a question more for Derek and Justin. But even they weren't around. When B1 was created, I'm not sure it was created for up on two oh six. I was under the impression that B1 was actually created for Witherspoon Street from like Henry to, to, to Goyot. And also B1 applies to the north side of Birch Avenue. Yeah, I, I don't think.
Michael, just to clarify, you, you're correct. The B1 district was created, the, the, the district was created to create businesses along those areas that you said.
Yes.
But what Josh is referencing is that in the township, the parking standard applies to all businesses across regardless of zone. So it's not based on zone. So that if you take your two oh six parking arrangement, the properties along there, those businesses have the same requirements as those that are in the walkable areas and are designed to be more walkable. That's what he was saying.
Yeah, but it, obviously, not obviously, I don't, I don't mean it that way, but what he said was, you know, it was more for two oh six. No, it was specifically designed and applied to that section of Witherspoon.
It, 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 yes, it was.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
It is applied to that, but the intent of the number of parking spaces. So the way in the sixties and seventies, the way you would look at parking wasn't by what individual area, but rather by what the worst-case scenario was going to be. And the worst-case scenario was if you had an office space or a large structure out on two oh six, it would require that many spaces. It was applied to the rest of the township consistently. So that's, that was my point. But the reality is if we were one property over or, or across the street, we wouldn't have that kind of demand.
I'd, I also would like to comment. Unfortunately, Dan Weisman is, is no longer with the municipality. He's gone off to greener passers, I assume. But he did discuss a couple of points on parking with Victor Anasike, our parking traffic consultant, who is here tonight. And I'd just like to, Dan left me a memo. I'd like to touch on two points that he left and also ask Victor to chime in on this. And, and one is that the calculation of off-street parking spaces that are provided are based on the number approved with the variance. The EV doesn't get the, the counted in the way they do. It, it's, they don't have ten spaces per the EV ordinance, they have seven. I'd like Victor to comment on that. And then Dan also had asked that the ADA space be the shortest accessible route. So I think, you know, I'm not an engineer, I would like Victor to, you know, comment on these, these two items, so.
And I'll just note for the record that all our professionals were sworn in at our last meeting, so they're also under oath now.
So, so Derek, just before he says that, I just want to say one thing. The way we were looking at it under the state code is you're allowed five percent of your required parking, not what's actually there, five percent of the required, which the required is fifty-three, five percent is five spaces. So you're allowed to build five spaces of EV and count it twice for ten. That's how we've read the code. Just, it's all, it's all, you know, whatever. But I'm just saying that's how the New Jersey code is written. I just did an application in Plainsboro and, you know, it's based on required spaces. And if you take a look at the code, it does say that, not on the number of spaces built.
I've had similar situations, I think you're right. I mean, I agree with them. Okay, so we've, board members, any other questions?
Steve, I, I thought Victor was going to comment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I didn't mean to cut him off, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, the calculations of the EV spaces, I think they are appropriate based on the EV, New Jersey EV guidelines. I think you required four percent for non-residential. So five percent is fine, and it's for the required. So I have no problem with the calculations that were made. With regards to Dan's comment about the ADA location, I think Kelly kind of illustrated with the diagram the relocation closer to the driveway and the one closer to the end of it. And it's clear that the, the one that is closer to the end of the building, it's a more accessible route than moving it closer to the driveway. So I, I'm, I'm okay with that arrangement, better than the, the, the. Uh, better than the, the, the one that Dan had suggested for them to move, uh, to the, closer to the driveway. Um, I don't think there's any other thing that I, the only, the only thing I, 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 I do have just a little concern. And, and I, I think they've said something about it is still the, the issue of the, uh. Laundry mat parking, uh, the operation, uh, and this issue that was brought up regarding. Uh, Amazon trucks or whatever. Uh, there's no provision. In the parking calculation for the laundry mat. It's assumed that everything is walkable. There is no forgiveness, there's no redundancy. For any drive, driving for the laundry mat. And so we have a very tight, uh, site here. So if we're introducing drop-offs and pickups and all that. Uh, I, I, I wonder if, uh, George can just, you know, for the benefit of the board. You know, to give some kind of insight as to how he envisages the operation. Will, will occur and not impact traffic.
Uh, would you like me to address this?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I understand, uh, Mr. Anosik's, uh, concern. Um, I think this laundry mat will be known for not having any parking. As compared to the laundry mat that's in the shopping center, for instance. Um, and I think in that sense, people that want to drive to the laundry mat for whatever reason. Uh, will pick the laundry mat that's in the shopping center. They may try, drive up Witherspoon. See if they get a parking spot that's on the street that's available and park it. If they don't find it, uh, they may continue to the shopping center. I think, I think we have to look at this as an extension of the very walkable area in downtown Princeton. The municipality has invested in redesigning Witherspoon over the last few years, make it much more pedestrian friendly, pedestrian safe. And, and we have an applicant that's prepared, that feels that the laundry mat will be successful without any designated parking. So it's clear that there will be a sign at the building that says, uh, parking reserved for the architecture office only. So that no, no laundry mat client is ever, you know, uh, attracted to that parking. And, and again, because the parking is relatively tight in the back, we don't want any kind of, uh, occasional. Uh, laundry mat client to drive back there. So there will be a sign that says very clearly, no parking, uh, except for the, uh, architecture office. And so with, I feel it makes sense to reinforce the kind of pedestrian nature of this. And, uh, you know, and what it probably means, um, and I think Mr. Anosik raised it last time. It means probably that there may be fewer people than we have a typical laundry mat that's also accessible by automobile. Uh, and, and I think in this case, the applicant feels, I mean, there, there seem to be interested parties to operate this laundry mat without parking. They know the people that express their interest, they know that there's no parking and they feel that this neighborhood can generate enough. Demand for the laundry mat without any parking. And that's a good thing in a way. It, it reinforces the pedestrian activity of this neighborhood and, uh, and, you know, of course. Imagine if we had another ten spaces for the amount, yeah, there would be more traffic. There would be more traffic going in and out in the back and so on. In this case, there's gonna be less traffic, um, generated by the laundry mat. I'm not saying there will be no traffic. There will be some people, you know, especially at the beginning, they may try to park on the street and. Walk to the laundry mat. If they don't find a space on the street, they'll probably drive to the other laundry mat.
George, what about the impact of the, the four hundred empty spots at the parking garage?
Well, yeah, they could, obviously, a laundry mat client who drives there could use one of those spots. Um, it's maybe not, I mean, maybe, yes, it's difficult to know. But it would probably be easier for that particular laundry mat client to drive to the shopping center where they get free parking. Um, yeah, I mean, then the, the resource across the street, I think is an excellent resource for all the employees that work there. Including the employees working at the laundry mat, the, the, the owner of the, of that business, they may park over there because it's convenient. Um, so I, I think it's, uh, you know, it's an extension of downtown, uh, Princeton. Where we have a lot of pedestrian activity and we wanna continue to encourage the pedestrian activity.
Yeah.
Just, just for clarification, Mr. DeGretti, since there's been so much testimony focusing on the laundry mat. Has there been any testimony about the hours of the laundry mat? Um, and if, I don't know what hours, uh, Mr. Zinder's employees keep. But after hours of, I suppose it's possible that people may park in the back if they're going to the laundry mat. So I was just trying to figure out, I didn't, I don't recall any testimony about hours of operation.
I mean, we're still gonna have signs prohibiting the parking back there. So it's not intended to be used as a parking area. I don't know if Josh knows about the hours.
I mean, I, I can certainly tell you, you know, my staff typically, you know, ranges from seven AM. Some of them get here till six PM typically. Regrettably, I'm here many more hours than that. Um, but, uh, um, as far as I know, the laundry mat is intended to comply with municipal, you know, requirements for. You know, I, I would guess they would probably be open till ten or eleven o'clock at night. What time they had opened in the morning, I'm not really sure, but they would comply with whatever the standard business hours are permitted within municipality.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things I just wanted to say from a big picture standpoint, you know, one of our major themes. Was the preservation of the, the building itself, right? It has a great history, unique history. And we've taken a very sensitive approach to protecting that building. But in doing that, that also takes, that also puts us into some constraints, right? So we, we're not clearing a lot. We have to work with the building where it is, the parking where it is. We don't have. You know, all of this ability to, to, you know, clear the site and start from scratch. So when we came upon, upon, upon this design and this use, we've recognized that it's something that's really needed in this neighborhood. And there's not many, I, I don't know if there's another location out there where there were the laundry mat would come in. Um, this has been designed to be a neighborhood laundry mat. So this is for those people that are walking and biking by. And when people have cars, they can drive to other laundromats, you know, if they, they know there's no parking here. That's not what we're intended to pull in. We're intended to pull in, you know, the, the service across the street that may want it folded. From the big apartment complexes and people in the neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods to kind of walk or bike there. And that's really the design of this laundry mat.
Okay, question.
Yes.
Um, are you? I'm getting the impression and, and maybe it's totally incorrect on my part, that you're basically implying. In the last five minutes, that in reality, you don't believe the parking lot, they, the laundry mat. Will generate a parking demand. Am, am I misreading you, mishearing you?
What, what we're saying is, and, and George, you could, you could expand a little more. That if there is a demand, there is available parking nearby, right? You have a, a parking lot that's underutilized across the street, a parking garage, rather. That on a daily basis has more than four hundred spaces. And I think that was part of George's analysis. And, um, George, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna go into a little more detail?
The, the other thing we did, you know, we, uh, summarized the availability of on-street parking and there is. Uh, some on-street parking, uh, available that can be used for the ornament. So when you mentioned the word demand, uh, you know, for parking, parking demand, well, you know. I'm sure, yes, there are probably people out there that would like to, uh, park there and, and go to the laundry mat. Because they, they maybe live further away, uh, you know, and that can be considered as the demand if you want. But the point here is that this particular use is not oriented to that demand. And, uh, we recognize that people may want to, will want to probably drive there and may. Use on-street lots and then cross the street or wherever they park. There's on-street parking on both sides. Um, but that the majority of people that want to drive, they will eventually drive to the shopping center where it's easy to park.
I guess, and I think you answered my question because. You really think that there won't be too many people, if anybody, that will long-term drive there. Now, and you raised the, made the statement, you know, where this concept of demand, not concept, but the word. I'm taking the word from your report. And your report says the laundry mat, after the forty percent reduction, will have four point six. As far as a parking space demand. Page five. So if, if, if fellow board members are hearing. Like I thought I was hearing that you were kind of downplaying that there would be any real demand. That's not even what your report says. So I, I, I have to counter with that. Cause that's.
Yeah, yeah. You're, you're right. And that's a good point. But let me explain also. When we did this report, you know, we did the traffic impact analysis and, and the, uh, the parking analysis. We, we don't have any hard data, uh, for the people, let's say, that live in this neighborhood and, and go to a laundry mat. Um, all we know is we have seen, you know, and, and the, the, this presentation we gave you. Shows people walking and bicycling and carrying their stuff, you know. And so. The, the forty percent that we have in the report is based on the census tract information. It's based, that's the only hard data that we have. And we keep using that in our studies for the traffic in, in general, in this particular neighborhood, we use that. And so it reflects the demand, if you want, that would be a typical demand if there was a parking lot for that. Use. And so without a parking lot, I would say there's still a demand, but you know, it would probably not be that four point six or five spaces. Uh, so the demand is also affected by the supply. And we know that in our industry. It's the same as, you know, you, you probably heard, if you were to, to double, uh, the, the width of Nassau Street, we would have much more traffic. You generate more traffic.
So you're arguing against your own report?
Yes, in a way.
Yes, okay, that's what I'm hearing. Let's go on. No, let's go on. Yeah, that's nonsense.
Hey Chairman, uh, Justin Lesko's had his hand up for a while. I just, I don't know if he wants to make a comment.
See you there, Justin, I'm sorry.
No problem at all. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment while we were on the topic of the parking, uh, lot and, uh, Amazon trucks and potential for that. Or a question about the parking lot, really. Uh, we saw the original proposal, uh, that may have some ADA issues. Uh, we saw the alternative that is obviously a much tighter squeeze near the building. Uh, was there? Is there a third alternative or was there any thought given to taking a couple of feet away from the building at, from the new, uh, addition? Uh, the wall that is closest to the parking lot over there? I see it's thirty-five feet wide now, but any thought to thirty-two, thirty? Uh, to allow for more room?
I, you know, we have to hear what the applicant has to say about that.
I was sorry, I was muted. So, yeah, we did look at, at modifying the building. Um, it sort of creates a cascade effect. Um, you know, across, across the, the, the design, um, across the. Uh, the relative location of where we have, uh, the glass connector. And, um, and so. Um, you know, we did look at it. We did look at cutting back the, um, the landscape area in the back corner behind the building. Um, you know, to add more asphalt, but none of those really provided, uh, you know, any significant. Um, benefit or impact on, on the parking lot. We had the same issues, um, you know. Either way, and, um. And, you know, we did look at a couple different after the, the meeting that we had, uh, with Dan. We looked at a couple alternate options. Um, putting the, um, the ADA spot first after the shared parking spot. But that actually puts the, um, the five-foot aisle, another three to four feet farther away. Um, and, and at some point, we felt that, you know, we're basically adding three feet to this area. For that extra access that's required into the back stair by having the shared, um, access. It, everything seems to work better and not, not just the drive circulation, but also the access. Um, when we started to cut back the building, it, it created other cascade issues, you know, through the design.
Okay, understood. Thank you. And just the other comments I had at this time, uh, on the Amazon trucks. Uh, I live on Witherspoon Street. I work on Witherspoon Street. I constantly walk on Witherspoon Street. There are Amazon trucks all over the place. They park in the middle of the road. Uh, they pull up, uh. In the other lane and they park, I guess, because it's close to the building that way. They park on the raised crosswalks. Um, I don't know how much more they will come because of this drop-off versus what's already there. I'm not sure, you know, is it gonna be a major increase or are they just already here, uh, you know, doing what they're doing? Um, I've seen our police officers drive around them when they're doing that. Um, so that's just my two cents on, on what's going on on Witherspoon with Amazon trucks.
And actually just clarify, so I refer to it as Amazon because it was the, what I was thinking as a pickup location. Um, that is what the tenant had said that he uses those for in other properties. Um, I don't know if they actually use it for Amazon, like that company per se. But, um, they do, people do have packages shipped to those locations and they do put them in the storage units for them. Um, if that's something that, um. This, uh, board does not want us to have, then if they have lockers, they can only be for their own use and can't be for outside deliveries and that's fine.
Thank, thank you for that, Josh. That's something that I would want to, to put in this. Um, the other question that I had, we focused a great deal on the use of this space as a laundry mat. And assuming that, you know, that, that everything works the way that everybody hopes that it does and it's a successful laundry mat from here into the future, wonderful. What happens when it's no longer a laundry mat?
We.
What happened with parking? What are we thinking about there?
We, we indicated that we would have to come before the board to get any other use in there that we would, uh, you know. Indicate that we would use it as a laundry mat. And if we would change it to another use, we would have to come back before the board.
Okay. George, did you have a comment?
Yes. Yeah, I do. It's, um, in terms of parking, I've been thinking of, of two places. That have similar possible solution. One, you know, is the back of the library and the other is the post office. Off, um, Nassau, which has very, very limited parking. And basically it says, you know, you can do it for fifteen minutes. So I'm wondering, and this is really a question for Mr. Bridger and, um, Mr. Lesko. Is there a possibility of putting a couple of spaces on Witherspoon that would have like a ten or fifteen minute limit? So somebody could sort of dash in, dump their clothes for a wash and fold operation and then come back. You know, when they get a text that everything's ready. Is, is, I mean, is that possible?
Uh, I don't think there's parking on the side of the street that Josh's building is located on. Um, and that would require municipal approval from, uh, mayor and council, um, and an ordinance. So. Uh, there's a lot of competing interests for those spaces in front of, uh, Avalon Bay. So I'm not sure how. How that would work. It's a good suggestion, though, um.
They are. The parking across the street, uh, came out of a twenty eighteen study. I believe it's all-day parking right now. So it's not set in stone, but I don't think it's, uh, anything the municipality has looked to change recently.
Steve, I have a question.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Josh, I, you have a tenant who's gonna be on the first floor of the old building. Is that correct?
Uh, I don't have that tenant yet. Um, if you know somebody, um, you know, we're, we're ready.
My bigger question is where are they gonna park?
They, they would be expected that, that they and their employees would park in the garage.
Okay, and.
Just like my employees are parking in the garage.
I can't remember the term they use in Congress when one member of Congress addresses another one, but my good friend Harlan. I, I, I kinda don't agree with you on that FedEx because I think it's a terrific service for the neighbors. They have a drop-off lockbox where the stuff can be dropped off instead of putting it on their porches. And I think that it doesn't add any extra traffic because it's, it's, you know, they'd either drop it off at the neighbor's house or they drop it off here. Where the other, I think the service to the neighbors is outweighs the potential. But that's my opinion. So that's all.
Okay, so are there any other questions?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Well, I'll, I'll just add on the, I, I, uh, kind of agree with that, that it, it, uh, it centralizes a, 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 a place to have things dropped rather than the truck is making a dozen stops in, in the neighborhood.
But it's centralizing the place on one of the busiest streets in town. You've got a school there. It's going to increase traffic. I, you, we keep, I, I mean, uh, this is a topic for, uh, I guess, uh, another time. We keep jamming more and more apartments, more and more buildings and more and more cars into this very small space. We're going to have people doing drop offs and other things that will increase traffic.
It, it could decrease traffic because people might walk there. And one vehicle dropped a lot of things off and people walk and pick up their package. So there's, that's another way to look at it. I, I can't prove it, but I don't know if you can prove your point either, really.
Sure.
If you go to Whole Foods for, uh, a, an Amazon return at any time, there's a line of, you know, multiple people.
Yeah, but they don't live in the Whole Foods parking lot. And there are a lot of people who walk in, live in walking distance to
I, I don't share your, your faith in people walking the same way.
Um, my, my question was actually about the, uh, the, the driveway.
Um, so i- i- is it planned that there would be any kind of, it, it gets quite narrow? And if everybody is, is coming down, I, I understand it's, um, people familiar with the, the arrangement here, but is there any kind of, um, uh, separation marking or anything down, um, the edge of the driveway, um, going towards the, um, the main entry?
Yeah, I can, I can think of it.
Sure.
Um, just to clarify, Ms. Trend, do you mean on the main, like the stub? The access point going down to Witherspoon Street, or are you talking about the drive aisle?
No, going down, so, um, you, you, you need to travel all the way down the driveway, right? As a pedestrian to get to this, um, the, the main entry and the zigzag switchback. Um,
Well, most of the employees will go in the back door.
Okay, so only the, um, o- only the accessible, um, route is really coming down the driveway and then up the zigzag.
Somebody was in a wheelchair, then they would have to come down the driveway. Yes.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
They were, they were needed that spot and needed, were coming to our office. You know, say like my mother, come up the back stair.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Steve, are, are you intending that staff will ask questions now?
That's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Oh, okay, great. Because I know there was also a question asked about the environmental commission report. And I think Derek was going to present some summary of that, so.
I just want to get through, make sure there are no board questions of this last presentation. Then we'll go on to the staff and, and Derek. Okay, any other questions, board members? Okay, so now, uh, we have two issues. One is Mr. Bridger is going to read, I guess, what, a summary of the environmental report into the record?
Uh, yes, sir.
I want, if you don't mind, wanted to do.
Thanks. I'm going to go over their executive summary, um, and they start off by saying the project should be granted to the de minimis height variance, which brings the ridge line of the new construction in line with that of the existing building. The low solar array above the roof height should not pose a visual distraction and provides the benefit of a symbiotic relationship with the green roof, increasing the efficiency of each element. The request for a rear yard landscape buffer strip varies to allow four point nine three feet where fifty feet is required should be revisited despite the fact that there is an exist, that this is an existing nonconformity. Uh, given the proposed sizable increase in impervious coverage, finding additional areas to provide softscaping becomes a priority. It could also help ameliorate air pollution from the parking area. They speak about the ADA ramp, um, that provides access to those approaching from Witherspoon Street. But the ADA parking, uh, space at the rear of the building is in their opinion too far from the ramp and requires navigating a slope driveway to access it. An additional ADA entrance should be provided closer to the rear of the building where the ADA parking space is, uh, located. They suggest a possible, uh, lift to the back porch entrance should be explored. And, uh, consider relocating the front entrance ramp to Lee Avenue, which would give Witherspoon Street, a Main Street, a better presence with trees and landscaping. Um, they also say that, uh, due to the proximity of the, the project to the community park school, uh, they should consider, uh, you know, evaluating the sightlines of the cars exiting the driveway. Whether it's been tra- is highly trafficked by, uh, elementary students walking and biking the sidewalk. It should be illustrated that the ramp and the landscaping will not hinder a driver from seeing a bike racing along the sidewalk to CP. Um, the parking requested seems inadequate for the multiple uses proposed, even with the parking allowed at the Henry Street Garage as outlined in the application's justification for the parking variance. Future development, um, such as the proposed future Franklin Street housing could put an even greater burden on Henry Street and the parking garage, even if you consider the borough parking requirement in the abutting zones as was presented in the, uh, applicant's presentation. The proposed spaces, um, are only fifty-nine percent of the seventeen that would be required. What happens if in the future the outside parties no longer want to accommodate parking from two fifty-four? Any shared parking arrangement should be carefully examined so as not to allow condition that will cause a negative impact on parking in the nearby residential neighborhood, um. Legal, uh, agreements for long-term, uh, parking should be acquired before, um, a CO is, uh, provided. While other proposed bike parking is, uh, beyond the required amount, um, that, that is they're giving more than is required, since many of the people using the building will be coming from a bikeable distance. The amount of secure and easable excess biking parking should be increased. Um, the massing of the upper floor overhang on the addition is not in keeping with the roof lines of the main structure around it. Given this project's location in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, sensitivity should be given to the neighborhood context. Um, solar shading should be, could be accomplished with a less aggressive element like vertical fins or reducing the size of the proposed overhang. There are two mature, mature trees on the lot. Unfortunately, both will be removed. Um, using only dark sky compliant lighting and, uh, these are suggestions. Consider using motion detectors so that, uh, exterior lights are on only as needed. And I see they forty, uh, agreed to that. Um, and then it just building in energy, they, they ask that the applicant use, uh, or consider using bird safe glass. Use forward forest stewardship council certified wood or locally sourced, sourced wood. Use rapidly renewable materials, um. And where possible, within the dictates of the historic preservation rules, the double hung windows on the new construction should be replaced with casement and or awning windows, which are more energy efficient. Um, they considered, and the stormwater management, they ask that you consider using gray water or stored rainwater for irrigation. Um, and they also talk about Yoshino cherry trees, which are proposed. While they're incredibly beautiful, beautiful and thrive with full sunlight, they are non-native, highly maintain, require high maintenance and are relatively short-lived. The project has then placed along the north side of the building more shade top tolerant native trees and shrubs with a greater species diversity would be a better choice. They ask that the applicant consult with the municipal arborist. And, um, on, uh, the health field, they say, consider replacing the fixed windows on the new construction front facade with operable windows to provide natural ventilation. Awning style windows, um, provide ventilation even during a rainstorm. Uh, justification for the parking variance request, uh, as part of the justification for the parking variance, the applicant has identified that the subject lot is the first parcel within the township and shares a boundary with the borough. If instead of using, um, the general township regulations, the parking calculations were to be paired using the regulations of the applicable to the nearby RB or M R R O districts in the borough, uh, the proposed uses would be permitted. Um, and in which the proposed use would be permitted, the parking requirement would be seventeen spaces. It's probably a little more long-winded than I hope for, but, uh, that's a summary of their, their comments.
Okay, um, just, uh, as an aside, before we go to our engineering staff, um, Mr. Lesko, Elizabeth Kim, uh, your memo that you just read on the environmental commission and the, our municipal traffic engineer all cited the same issue with the handicap parking and relative to the ramp location or the slope walkway in the front. Just as an aside. All right, so now we have, uh, I guess our engineering staff uh, comments relative to all the, the presentations. So I guess maybe the best bet, Mr. Lesko, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have a few comments in no particular order. Um, the first, uh, came up in this meeting, came up at the last meeting, came up in the, uh, applicant's materials, uh, a conversation about the porches counting towards FAR. And if they didn't, then the FAR variance wouldn't be as close to, or, or as expansive as it is. It'd be, it wouldn't, it would still be there, but it wouldn't, you know, the number would be lower. Um, uh, that to me seems like cherry picking numbers and, and not an argument enough for the FAR variance. Um, it's, it's what we count, you know, and, and their porches all in the B one zone, they all would go under it. Um, and one thing we don't count is the basement space here. Um, and I have that at roughly twenty-seven hundred feet. So I mean, if we want to start cherry picking, what we don't want to count, then maybe, you know, we can start cherry picking, uh, other numbers too. So just be aware of that as it comes to the FAR variance. Um, the, uh, wall on Lee Avenue, uh, I just wanted to address that because, um, uh, I know Dan and Derek's memo and mine slightly disagreed. Uh, but I think both of us, and after speaking with Dan Weissman about it, um, agree with Josh's approach um, to, uh, keep the wall lined up with the other walls on the street and require a right of way agreement before council. If the council had any sort of issue with that because they expected some sort of expansion of the sidewalk, they would say it at that time. Uh, we as staff don't anticipate that. So it seems like a better design alternative for it to be lined up with the walls that already exist on Lee Avenue. Um, moving on to, uh, the ADA accessibility, I know we talked about this last time and, and it seems like we've really, uh, you know, beat this, uh, into submission. But I think it's obviously a very important, uh, topic to, to discuss. Um, Josh, you, your statement last time about having the ADA uh, inviting and non-discriminatory, completely agree with that. Um, but I guess my question, and, and that was in, in, uh, uh, response to if there could be ADA accessibility in the rear alone. Um, so is there any, or have you considered having a secondary lift in the rear? Um, in addition to what you have in the front, so that someone could have a choice? Because as you said earlier, ADA doesn't just mean a chair, but maybe for someone in a chair, they'd prefer the lift and maybe someone with a different, uh, uh, level of ability, they would take the switch back in the front.
We did look at, at adding a lift in the back and, um, it is challenging at best. Um, and, um, we also feel that it does not meet the general intent of the ADA, that somebody who is, um, impaired is supposed to take the, the regular pathway that everybody else takes into, into a building. And, um, if we did a lift in the back, it would only provide access for our firm and our office. It would not provide access for the other locations, certainly not the first floor retail tenant we plan on having come in. Um, and so from a value proposition, it, it felt like it was an unequal, um, access point. So that's why I, I do believe very strongly in my, you know, my father lived, you know, eight years before he passed away in a wheelchair. And, um, I have that experience etched in my mind. It's one of the reasons why this is a priority for me. And, um, and I think that, um, I think that where we're putting the wheelchair, the, the accessible parking and the wheelchair access we have is, um, you know, I think it's the right place for it. I think it's safe and I think it, um, you know, is a, uh, complies with the, the American Disabilities Act. And we did look at other, we just couldn't get it to work, honestly.
Hmm, got it. And I understand and I agree with that, although I would argue that you could say your current design is unequal because there are two entrances in the rear with stairs. But I imagine your employees will walk to from their cars, the ones that are using them. So you know, the argument that it's unequal to make people go around front, well, there are going to be some people going around back anyway.
Most of, but most of our employees do park in the parking garage and they do come in the front door. That's where most of our, um, employees come in. Um, and, uh, you know, I would expect the retail tenant to use the door in the back of their space most often for taking out the trash, um, which will be in the back. Um, we will have, um, additional bike storage for our employees and things in, in the back. So somebody with a bike might be going there, but I think that, uh, the vast majority of people coming to our office actually use the front door.
Understood. Uh, and just lastly, we've, uh, another thing that we've talked about a few times and you've heard it in the HPC report, the PEC report right now and other reports, um, is the, uh, the, the top floor of the new building and the feature that's coming out that you've mentioned you're going to push back. Um, was there any thought to a pitched roof or stepping back that, or has it always been the windows with that roof feature?
No, actually, it, it, it was a pitch roof. It was a larger roof. It was a lower roof. I mean, we spent a lot of time working on this and, uh, you know, when, especially when it's a space that you're going to be occupying, um, coming to what feels like the right choice is not always an easy one. Uh, we did look at eliminating that overhang completely, um, but we felt that, um, architecturally and aesthetically, um, you know, it actually softens the facade to have that eve coming off the front. And we felt that the side elevation along Lee Avenue by having the, uh, synthetic siding, excuse me, the synthetic shingles, um, on that, on that face, it really does make it feel like it's a pitch roof moving back, you know, along the, um, you know, the, the darker transition. Um, and, and I think we do think this is the best solution after working on it for, you know, four plus years.
Hmm, understood. And, you know, notwithstanding my criticisms, if you want to call them that. I, I think it's pretty apparent that you've spent a lot of time, uh, and effort, you know, trying to get this right. Uh, those are all the questions I have.
Um, let's go on to Elizabeth Kim. Elizabeth?
Working on it. Okay, um, so my comments are really to address the, uh, presentation that was made from Josh at their July twenty-third meeting, which was, I think today you did a recap, but really my comments are really to address them. And I think there are a few things that you didn't talk about that I'll include. So, um, HPC would be supportive of the six changes presented by Mr. Zinder, um, which addresses some of the recommendations that were outlined in the HPC Chair's memorandum. So one will be installing the stork markers, which they had asked for, which would be incorporated with the, with the St. Jackson historical and cultural societies' plaques and tours. Um, having the existing front porch rails be reused and repaired and replaced in kind where necessary to maintain the existing porch railing height. Um, create distinction between the stork house and new addition by making the exterior stucco on the new construction white instead of yellow, which originally was intended to match the existing house. And again, for the zoning board, this is, um, you know, under the criteria of additions under stork preservation. It's intended to show a differential between the addition and the historic building. And also you talked about changing the color of the second floor windows from black to white. That would also be a supportive. Uh, you spoke about the Witherspoon facing new studio roof overhang would be pulled back about eighteen inches, which would be appreciated. Uh, we felt that, we feel that probably reducing that visual perception that is, which would still look like it extends beyond the existing house could somehow be achieved by some change in your window. Some change in your window design and that will come up later. I know that they had talked about perhaps putting mullions instead of. On the corner where you have actually a glass that goes around the sides, which makes it seems like that the roof line projects more than it actually does. Especially when you're pulling it back eighteen inches. Um, and they, uh, would also appreciate that you're investigating reducing the LED Kelvin from three thousand to twenty eight, twenty nine hundred. Um. Josh also states, stated that he did not believe that the front corner lawn is a defining feature of the building on the property. Uh, you presented photographs of the geological investigation that revealed a large outcrop on the property corner. Which you believe prevent the house from being built to that corner. As everyone knows, Princeton is known for glacial deposits and boulders. The glacial activity included both glacial and. Paraglacial material. I lived the house on Mount Lucas Road. Where the basement foundation was built around a boulder, so I'm not sure that that's a reason that they wouldn't have built it there. And there is no evidence that the sighting of the house is because of the outcrop that was discovered and there's no evidence. That that outcrop did not exist and was removed when the current foundation sits. It is undeniable that Annette, Annette's house sits higher above the street. And sidewalk than its neighboring properties and the larger lot affords her an open lawn by the property corner. And as previously stated and was recognized in Hunter Research summary of historic significance and integrity, integrity for Josh. He states that the larger residence with ample lawn space was likely designated to reflect the aspiration and success. Of Annetta and her children. But again, at this point, we don't know if Annette's intention was to build the house on the corner and was shifted because of the outcrop. However, it is clear that the house is uniquely perched on that property. And above the adjacent streets and sidewalks and its presence is amplified by that open lawn. On the corner of the house and that's the way that we've always recognized that property. So because of that, it has owned its right as far as its setting on that property. Um, there were things that we didn't see that were addressed, that were in the Chair's memo in the redesign. That was relocating the new addition as proposed in front of the existing house along Lee, which currently erases its presence. Along Lee and that's a big thing because that's erasing the history of that building along that street. Also about the butt rock and landscape, which there's a lot of conversation that already occurred. Um, they felt that that was inappropriate with the streetscape. Uh, changing the studio windows, which I previously talked about, to making those designs more relatable to the existing buildings again. By perhaps adding mullions, they didn't have a problem with the glass up there, they just felt that that. Window style was not relatable to the historic building. And, um, some of the comment, one of the comments that was made was also. For the applicant to consider putting an elevator at the corner of the property near the laundromat entrance. Um, that would eliminate shifting the Senate porch entrance, eliminate the need for the switchback sidewalk design. And possibly eliminate your front setback variance. Um. So, uh, the Secretary Interior Standards and Guidelines which Josh talks about. So rehabilitation is the only treatment that allows expanding a historic building by enlarging it with an addition. Therefore, the standards for rehabilitation and guidelines for rehabilitate, rehabilitating historic buildings applies for this application. Rehabilitation is defined as the act or process of making possible a compatible use for a property. Through repair, alteration, additions while preserving those portions. Or features which convey its historical, cultural or architectural value. Um. Josh concluded at the meeting that the new addition meets the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of stored. Properties. Um, that is true to a point. Uh, the. Hyphen clearly meets that criteria because you can see the distinction between the. Addition to the historic building. In addition, they are able to not do any demolition, so if you. Remove the addition, the existing structure could go back to its existing. Feature and that is something that is identified in the standards. Um, in addition, um. The, the roof line was considered by HPC to be distracting. And projecting, again, we talked about perhaps Josh could look at this as far as changing some alterations to that window design. Um, but, um, any. Addition or feature, um, should not be overwhelming or it should stand subordinate. To the historic building. So when you look at that criteria, the addition that's placed on. Uh, Lee Avenue is not subordinate because it's sitting in front of the historic building and it should always be either set. Behind or never in front of that front line. So those are just some of the things that I wanted to bring up, um, that, you know. With Josh's new design, but you know, HPC did support his application, however. It was conditional because they felt that there were, he did such a good job at working. At the Witherspoon facade, but not enough on the Lee Avenue one. So, um. Any questions the board has, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Board members? Okay, let us go to our traffic consultant. Victor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I just have. Uh, I just want to summarize my comments. I just have two comments and concerns and I, I think I already voiced one. Uh, which is, uh, regarding the parking, uh, I don't believe. The, uh, parking supply, I think the parking supply is too assumptions of the. Of the parking demand. By that I mean, there's too many assumptions that. Uh, there will be no traffic demand at all to the site. At the minimum, I think even at the opening time, the novelty period of, of, of the site, the first two months. Of the site where people are learning this, uh. Uh, the location, there's gonna be demand, there's gonna be, uh, a lot of, uh. People driving in expecting to park. And is that violation of driver's expectancy that I'm concerned about? Uh, there is no, uh, I know the applicant says there's gonna be signing. Uh, but I don't know how effective this signing will be to prohibit people. From going in, looking for parking or even trying to park on the streets. I think that's a concern I have, uh, and I, I hope they can address that a little bit further. Uh, the other concern I have is, uh, or comment, uh, maybe question two. Uh, is regarding the ADA parking, uh, the location of the ADA parking. Uh, at the last hearing, I believe, uh, I think it's Josh, uh, one of, one of the professionals for the. Uh, applicant had indicated, uh, that. Uh, the accessible route will be signed because of the grade. At the driveway for anybody on wheelchair. To go through this path and use the easement. To access the front of the, of the building. Uh. I am not sure it, what, how this signing will be and what this path to this easement will be. Uh, if, if, uh, Kelly or Georgia can use their display and just show us. Or the board how somebody on wheelchair will assess the parking lot. To this easement without being. Uh, going through the driveway or in the circulation path. I think that's the only, uh, question I have and the only concerns I have. The accessible route from that parking, uh, uh, ADA parking space to the front of the building. And then, uh. The parking supply. Those are the only concerns I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, I don't believe we have any, this, Mr. Dolomilsky, do you have any questions? If, are you here?
Victor, did you want to see, uh, the ADA access or?
Yeah, if, uh, if for, in the interest of time, if they can just show how they envisage. This signing will be and what path they're gonna follow from the ADA spot to the front. So that we can, you know, because it was never answered how this will happen.
Sure, we can, we can address that and I think.
Yeah, I thought we would do it later, but let's, yeah, we can do it now, that's fine.
This was Kelly's drawings, so this was on the drawings tonight and on what we submitted. It had the accessible route indicated here and then this is the intent of the, the sign. Kelly, I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah, so if you zoom out a little bit, Josh. Um, the intent is to install that sign. Uh, adjacent to the required ADA style, ADA stall sign. Uh, at the end of the five foot wide clear space. So when a driver comes in, their car is gonna immediately see the ADA stall and this separate placard sign. That illustrates the accessible route, which is shown on the right hand side of the sheet. With that red dotted path that traverses the, the driveway on the property, goes on to the neighbor's property. Into the public right of way along the sidewalk and then, uh, depending on where the. Person is going, either they can access through that sloped. Walk up to the main floor for the retail and Mr. Zinder's office. Or continue down the right of way, the sidewalk into the accessible path at that paver area for the laundromat at the ground floor.
It looks like though that that accessible path goes right up the center of the drive aisle.
It, it crosses over into the neighboring property.
Well, it goes, it crosses at an angle and it goes into the neighboring property, but doing that takes you right down the center of the, uh. Close to the center of the drive aisle.
Correct.
But, George, I'm sorry, uh, Victor, does that help explain your question?
Yeah, but a- a- again, I guess. My, 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 my question is the sign in itself, you're, you're saying there's a sign. This drawing of the path, is it gonna be on the sign?
Yes.
How is, how is, uh, somebody that comes out, how would they navigate through that sign? How would they know how to follow that sign? You, you have, i- 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 you have somebody on a wheelchair comes out. How would they see that sign and follow it and know that they have to go through the drive aisle to get to the easement? It, it's, it's a little tasky.
Little what?
A little confusing.
Uh, um. I, I don't know, I don't think it's confusing at all. I think it's, uh, like any map or drawing, you can look at the drawing and see where you would, you would go. I mean.
That's why I was suggesting.
Here's the prob, here's the problem I have. You, we, we, we're putting pedestrians in, in the drive aisle. As a safe area to walk to or to even walk through. Is that, is that appropriate?
Pedestrians walk on that, on that driveway every day.
Yeah, but we, we, we're not asking them to do it, we're not signing them to use that. But this is now a sign, you're telling.
No, actually, that's, that's not technically true because on the back of our office. It says this entrance is for employees only, all visitors enter through the front. So anytime a visitor comes to our office, they walk around the front and come in the front and I could. Gladly show you those signs, but that is the way it has been since we opened.
So i- is the ADA sign, ADA spot just for your employees?
No, the ADA spot would be for visitors as well, but a visitor, a visitor walks in the front door, does not go back to the building. The back of the building, walk them into our kitchen, which is a secondary entrance.
Okay, so I, I'm talking about a visitor who is on a wheelchair.
Yeah.
We're asking that visitor to use the driver to get to the easement. That's what the sign is saying, that's my concern.
Asking, we're, we're, yes, we're asking them. Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, and I think in our, in, in my direct testimony, I brought up that if there was still concern over. The access path and the lack of safety, we can add in additional like mirrors and stuff to provide additional visibility. For that ADA path. The sign is gonna be at the end of the parking stalls we just showed, so if somebody pulls in, they're gonna see the sign. And the sign clearly says, here's the ADA path and it's in a bright red color noting how to. Traverse that path in a accessible way. So I think it's very clear that how to get there in an accessible manner and. We're still willing to work and add additional safety devices on the property. If there's concern over utilizing that drive aisle.
Yeah, it might, yeah, I, 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 I think there's, I think there's, uh, there's a little bit more, more to do there. I, I'm, I'm a little concerned because. I- i- if, i- i- a scenario where somebody is using that drive aisle and there's another vehicle. Coming in from Witherspoon, there's a blind sight, they don't see there's a wheelchair person coming through that drive aisle.
So I, I.
I, I don't know.
I really disagree with.
How that is it safe?
This parking lot on a daily basis, okay? You, you are going very, 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 very slowly when you come into that parking lot. You're not speeding, you're not, you know, and if somebody was in that lot, which I have come into this driveway numerous times. When my employees are coming out of there, visitors are coming out of there. And you, you're not, it's a dead end, you're driving very slow. You know, when you pull into this lot, if you drove faster, you would have big problems. For getting, having a pedestrian there, just getting in and maneuvering. You know, so you're driving very slow and you're coming into this parking lot. You know, it, it, you're going to see everybody there and as Kelly mentioned, we could certainly add mirrors or things like that to, to aid in. Visibility, but you, you see everybody coming, I mean, I stop, like, there's a black cat that comes back there on a daily basis. I saw for that black cat, you know?
Yeah, uh, i- i- if you could add a little bit more, uh, safety, uh, treatment there, I think it will help.
We will. Okay, um, Victor, is that, are you comfortable with where we're at?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with my comments, uh, as long as Kelly indicated they, they're willing to. To enhance safety there, uh, that's fine.
Alright, um, alright, so we've heard from our staff and, um. Now we should have completed all the testimony and the questions. Um. I assume we should open this up. To the public, uh, right after Mr. DeGresia. Gives us a very brief summary.
If, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would like the public to comment because I may have something. That I would like to add, you know, based on that. You know, do.
You'll get to, you'll get to chant, you want to say anything before I open it up to the public?
No, no, I, I, you know, I think that, you know, overall, we have a applicant here that's. Has a very sensitive approach and like I said, we've had a lot of different elements from preservation. To, you know, the accessibility issue where there's no accessibility today. To the sustainability elements and I know Josh just touched upon them. But it's pretty much everything under the sun from, you know, proposing, looking at green roofs, solar panels, geothermal, EV charging. Uh, porous pavement, um, and of course, the driving force behind this are the community needs. Which are, you know, one, allowing an architect firm that has been in Princeton to can remain in Princeton and grow healthy there. Um, to a, uh, another retail, small retail operation. That will help the B one zone, remember this is a business zone and it really never, it really fulfilled its purpose. Under the ordinance of creating these small businesses, this goes a long way with the laundromat and the, the retail, the small retail to do that. And of course, the laundromat, the. And of course, the laundromat, the neighborhood, neighborhood laundromat, which is, is a huge, huge benefit. And it's been recognized across the reports. It's one of the things I know we heard from the HPC. You know, I, I was at that meeting and that was a really positive meeting with HPC. They really loved protecting the house. They really loved the elements of providing the, the, the laundromat in the neighborhood. One of, one of them mentioned that there was one there on Lee Street in, in the past. I don't know if that's true or not. But, you know, sometimes they know a lot more about the history than I do. So in my mind, they were very supportive of the application and indicated that they were supportive of all the variants as well. And they asked us to look at a couple of things. And I think we respectively went through a lot of those with our last two presentations. So with that being said, I think this is a real opportunity for us to, to work on something that would really help the neighborhood and the community in a number of different ways. And with that, I, you know, if you can open it up to the public, that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, could I just address the comment that Mr. DeGresio said? We actually, the HPC actually did not support the variances because we did not have staff report for them to be able to evaluate it. They were aware of what was in the application for variances, but there was actually no, no support form because they felt that they weren't in a position to talk about it without those reports.
I recommend, I, I, I think that if you look at the tape at hour 209.18, it's very clear that the resolution that Ed Schmier offered says recommend approval of the variances. So I think it was very clear and it also came up two other times in that. So if you do look at the video, it is in there a couple of times.
Okay.
Very clear about that.
I don't what.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
You're muted, Elizabeth. Yeah, I don't see the variance in the, in the chair memo. Chris, could you tell me where that is?
No, no, I'm talking about at the speed, at the actual hearing where it was discussed. They, we talked about the variance a few times. It's all on YouTube. It's great. You can watch it again.
I'll tell you what, the recording.
Yeah, and it specifically said in a few areas, including Ed Schmier's summary, that they recommend, endorse and recommend approval of the variances to implement the plan, I think was his exact language.
Yeah, and I think unfortunately, maybe that was a comment that was made by him, but not necessarily by the HPC. And that's probably why it wasn't carried into the, to the memo. I think that maybe he was summarizing it that way because I think if you also recall within there, I said, since we don't have the report, we, I can't really talk about the variances accurately. And although you did present part of it, again, I do not recall HPC specifically supporting any of the variances. That's my recollection. Happy to go back.
People could, people could witness the same event and have two different recollections.
I know. Okay.
Mr. DeGresia, we can go back and forth.
No, I, I, I'm willing to.
Wait, please, let me talk. Ms. Kim, summarize the findings of the HPC. We're going to leave it at that right now and try to move on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. So at this point, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public. Claudia, has there anyone indicated they would like to speak on behalf of this applica, application?
Yes, Ms. I'm going to, Leon, one second. Please, son.
Hi.
There you are. Ma'am, we just need, if you're comfortable giving us your address. And please go on.
Okay, it's 198 Linden Lane.
Alrighty, and I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Leanna Janki. I live on Linden Lane. I've been a resident here in Princeton for two and a half years. I serve as Executive Director of Princeton Nursery School, which is on Lee Ave. So I'm very familiar with this corner as a walker, a biker and riding my, in my car as well. I also serve as the Chair of the Cares Committee for the municipality. But tonight I'm really speaking just as a resident here. And so I wanted to clarify that I have attended several zoning meetings over the past few months and just want to share appreciation. So much thoughtfulness, so much care, attention to detail that I've really appreciated. And I can see everyone is a night out, which is new for me and I appreciate that as well. I am the proud daughter of a Nigerian immigrant who was an entrepreneur and I shared my story at the HPC meeting and really wanted to come tonight to make sure I shared it with the, with the zoning board as well. My dad took on a number of businesses and one actually included a laundromat. So my four siblings and I worked at the laundromat. We folded laundry. We emptied the coin machine, which we all always fought over. And we got to really see how the laundromat supported the DC community that we lived in. And there were a number of backgrounds. I think that is the surprising thing about a laundromat. It's not just maybe for the communities that we assume might use it. My family quickly went from the owners of the laundromat to, to visitors and clients of the laundromat. When we began to struggle financially, we lost the business and several other businesses that my dad had. And we were really challenged. We moved from Washington DC to rural coal mining Pennsylvania, where we were an intergenerational family with, my grandparents lived with us, Nigerian and Polish grandparents that lived there, my four siblings, myself and my parents. So we were nine adults in one home. We had one washing machine. When that washing machine grew old and we weren't able to maintain it, we then relied on the laundromat. The laundromat was driving distance. Imagine rolling hills of West Virginia. That's basically where we lived. We did not have access to getting to the laundromat often. So imagine four teenage girls, one, a lonely brother and a lot of dirty clothes. It dramatically impacted us as young adults, as children. We were still low income and so we ourselves had jobs. We worked at Wendy's. We worked at the Bingo Hall where it was still allowed to smoke indoors. So it was very important that we washed our clothes. But we were unfortunately not able to do that. It impacted our entire family. Distance was the challenge that we had and it's still the case for the community here. And so even though I'm not part of the community that would likely be using the laundromat now, I do, do really think that the perspective of that community, I hope that there is another community member here that might share this perspective really has to stay as the priority. I can see how much this application has gone over hoops and barriers beyond, beyond what I had even imagined. And what I really ask for the zoning board to do is to remove any barriers you can. There's so much thought going into every aspect of the project. And some barriers might be priority. But the biggest priority is what the goal would be for having laundromats so accessible to our families who live in Witherspoon, Jackson, in and around Witherspoon, Jackson as well. Their needs were expressed through the survey. And again, my attendance tonight is just to really share that perspective of a low-income community member who would have benefited from having a laundromat within walking distance. I'm also very aware of businesses and traffic on Lee. We have gone to the town several times to support with that. I love the idea of a 15-minute parking spot, which would allow for young preschoolers, maybe down the street to cross and then be dropped off easily. And the, the comments that have been made about Amazon, FedEx drop-off service. To me, as a nonprofit individual who works with communities who have a number of barriers and access and transportation is typically one, it really sees, seems like just another avenue for them to be able to get their packages in a one-stop place. And I really appreciate your time tonight and, and would be happy to connect afterward if anyone has questions.
Comments? Okay, Claudia, anyone else?
Mr. Samuel Bunting?
Mr. Bunting, you're, there you go.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Bunting, if you're comfortable, can you give us your address or at least tell us you live in Princeton?
Yes, absolutely. I'm a resident of Princeton at 99 Dempsey Avenue.
All right.
I'm also.
I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear from any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I so swear.
Thank you.
Yes, so my name is Sam Bunting. I'm a resident at 99 Dempsey Avenue. I'm also the proprietor of a property at 242 John Street, which is just around the block from the subject property around on Lee, around Lee Avenue. So I wanted to comment on the application tonight. And again, I would credit the board for the commitment and dedication that you've given to reviewing this application. Personally, I, I, I think that this neighborhood really deserves thoughtful investment. And that's what I see with this application here tonight. And in particular, and without wanting to, I couldn't say it more nicely than what Ms. Janko already said. I, I heard a lot of testimony and discussion tonight. I, I don't think we really talked about what an incredibly positive community benefit it would be to have a laundromat at this site. When I look out there tonight, it's really dark. It was pouring with rain. But I know that there will have been people going out in that to cycle across town or haul wagons full of dirty laundry across town. No matter what the weather, freezing cold, burning hot in the summer, they're going out across the town. Because Princeton, a welcoming community, has not made this essential amenity available in their neighborhood. And these are, in many cases, some of the most unprivileged people in our community. And we haven't made that accommodation for them. And, you know, in the entire time I've been living in Princeton, people have been talking about, oh, there's going to be a laundromat, there's going to be a laundromat. Never comes. And Mr. Zinder has brought an application now that provides something which will be incredibly valuable to some of the least privileged members of our community. And I think that we really need to put it on the record what an incredibly positive amenity that will be. And I, I hope that you, and I'm sure that you're all empathetic people and will consider that strongly in your deliberations. I have two children who attend Community Park School. One of them is five years old and the other is eight years old. Every day, either my wife or I ride bicycles from our home on Dempsey Avenue to Community Park School. So I really respect the attention of the board to the question of traffic safety on Motorspoon Street and the possibility of increased traffic, which may accompany new commercial development. And I'm also old enough to remember that there was a full-service hospital across the street from this site with 1,600 employees, regular ambulance traffic going up and down. And, you know, I, I don't think we want to go back to that. But when I consider the sum total of traffic, which is going around town, I just find it, you know, I, I just do not have a great deal of fear that this one additional building is going to significantly move the needle on what we already see on Witherspoon Street. And I say that as somebody, like I say, I have my children, my wife are riding them down the street on a daily basis. I just don't really have the same fear about the potential traffic impact that's likely to arise from this site. Now, the, I was very interested in the, the possibility of a 45-foot, 10-unit apartment building. I, I think that that could also be a, a very valuable addition to the street. There's, there's a great need for housing in Princeton. So, you know, if you, if you were to set this application aside, you know, I, I would be very interested to, to see where that goes and, and what concepts we could come up with. And, you know, that being a compliant design, you know, hopefully that, that could be something that could go through quickly and without the same same concerns about, you know, parking because of course then the parking would not be an issue because of the HO7 zoning. But on the other hand, I have to say that I think it's really great that Mr. Zinder has chosen to make his practice at this location, to invest in this historic neighborhood and to bring this creative and responsive application to the board. So in general, I have to say I'm supportive. Thanks for your time.
Very much. Claudia, anyone else?
I don't see any more hands.
Hey. All right, we will close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. DeGresia, would you like to sum up before we go into executive session?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just sort of echo the, the comments that you've heard from the two members of the public that spoke tonight, that this is really an opportunity to provide something to the community on a multi-level approach. I think through the materials, through our responses, you could see that this design has been studied very carefully from somebody within the community that understands the community to, to, to go through the extra steps with this very careful approach that does many things from preserving a very unique building to, you know, pushing the envelope on sustainability to, you know, addressing those community needs by allowing an architect to continue to grow by creating a community laundromat and by, you know, that small retail space as well. And I think, I'm not going to go through the, the, the proofs because our planner went through and talked about how the site can accommodate the FAR. And many of the variances that are listed are very technical in nature. You know, the setback is not the building. It's to allow ADA and bike storage, you know? The, the, the height is the existing height of the existing structure. There's, so even though we're triggering a few of these spoke variances, they're there, some's there because we're putting a residential driveway next to a commercial driveway to improve safety and circulation. But that triggers a variance, right? The shared parking space gives us an additional parking space. But, you know, we have to create a, that was not a variance. What is that? A conditional, yeah, conditional use authorization. So when it really breaks down, it's not much there in terms of deviations. You have a very appropriate use that will activate the B1 zone. So it's an appropriate location and something that will help to preserve the integrity of a special building while addressing clear community needs. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, board members, we're going to executive session now. Comments, questions? I guess, do we want to, one, just comment, do we want to take the variant, I believe we almost have to take the variances individually? Karen, that makes sense?
I was going to say, you have Derek's memo. It's the memo he prepared with Dan Hoistman. And beginning on page two of the memo, he goes through the variances that the applicant requires for this project. So I would say that's the best way because although there's been a lot of discussion about one aspect, which is the laundromat. They, they do need a variety of variances for the entire project. And as Derek points out, two of those variances require at least five affirmative votes because they fall into the category of D variances, which I know the board has dealt with many times before. So I agree that that's the best way to, to go through this. And if you want Derek to walk you through it, I'm sure you can do that. Or if you want to.
Just, just to point a clarity, Karen, I, I believe that the FAR is only, the only D variance. Just just to point a clarity, Karen, I I I believe that the F A R is only the only D variance.
Uh, no, don't you need a conditional use? Because I think Derek, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about. Yeah, they need relief from that too, right?
Yeah. That's a different standard, though.
Yes, it is. But I'm saying they still, they still require five affirmative votes, so.
Yeah, yeah, the conditional use authorization.
Yes.
And that's needed to have the shared parking spot.
Correct. So that's up to the to our chair and the board. Would you want Derek to go through and call them out for you or how you'd like to handle it?
You're muted.
David, yeah.
I lost the connection there for a second. Um, I think it'd be a good idea to have Derek go through those. Um, but I think, do we, let's just start the conversation on this. And then we'll go into Derek's memo and and getting to the vote. So what's the feeling of the board? What comments or questions do you have on this application? And what's your feeling?
I'm very much, I'm very much in favor of supporting this, and I know that we need to go through point by point, and there might be some modifications that we want to agree to, but I I couldn't. I I feel that while we're all being thoughtful about a lot of different things, it's ki- I don't know if it's not seeing the forest for the trees, there might be a better metaphor, but I just think there's there what was stated by the two people who recently spoke about it in favor of it, I think really gets for me to the heart of the matter, that it's what's being provided outweighs the where the where the roof, whether the roof is overwhelming or, you know, various things that people have said, I just, I feel like design, the design of it i- is does not seem inappropriate to me. And the, I feel like the outcome of having, I I'm not going to say it as well as the others, but the the laundromat, the attention to the historic nature of that um building, and I forget, I wrote it down, the third thing, but um, I just think it's, I'm just in, I'm in favor of it, but I understand, well, we would need to go through perhaps through some of the things to make some modifications.
Yeah, I'll say I'm of the same uh mind. I'm I'm uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 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 details of it, um, I I'm sure are need some discussion, but overall, I'm in support.
I I agree with with the other four members that have spoken. I support this. I think Josh did a a yeoman's job like usual. Um, he put a lot of heart into this and a lot of effort, and I think the benefits outweigh the negatives. Um, I was one hundred percent on board until that damn Amazon thing came up. I was still not sold on that, guys, but um, you know, i- if if everyone else says, Harlan, um, you know, there's an old expression, my grandmother said that uh, when three people tell you you're drunk, you should lay down. So if um, I've been on this board for a million years, and I respect you guys, so if you're all telling me that I'm drunk, I will lay down on this one. So um, I I do have a concern uh that we are almost becoming overpopulated. And traffic is becoming a nightmare, and we don't have the infrastructure to support all the massive development that's going on. Um, and it's it's just a a a concern. Um, you know, I'll get off of that soapbox for the time being, and hopefully people are right, and that this will reduce the amount of traffic on Witherspoon. Um, and I hope that in ten years' time, I'm not lagging a fat finger saying I told you so.
I'd like to say, in general, I I do support this. To a certain extent, I sort of feel it's like one of those cubic puzzles of wood that you pu- put together, and it's hard to put it all together, but you see the whole thing, and it is a cube. Um, and, you know, so I'm, the individual parts, I think we should go over piece by piece, but not lose lose sight of the fact that this is an entire project which has a coherence and a logic to it. I think the fact that it um brings investment in an appropriate way to this this corridor is is very useful for the for our town.
Okay, um, board members, at this time, you, go ahead, Michael.
Um, I I s- support it. And support the laundromat, I understand that. I think a big or a hurdle, which we will get to um, soon, of course, and we've discussed it a lot, is parking. And I don't know, I guess the start number is whatever the code asks for. Um, hopefully, all the board members know what that number is. I think, Derek, it's it's fifty-three. Oh, obviously, the parking variance for onsite, the applicant has asked for, I think it comes out to seven, really. Okay. Now, some board members may be like me that thinks a bigger number should be required in a in approving this. Now, a lot of time was spent today and on the twenty-third of July talking about the parking garage. And yes, I believe that is an obvious, you know, don't dispute re- you know, resource. But one thing I have, and it's really a question for Derek and Karen, do we have the right, okay, they proposed seven onsite. If, but if we think the project in general should have, including onsite, I'll make up a number. Thirty-two. Do we have a mechanism or a right to condition it on that? And how do we do it? And I just made up the numbers.
Understood. Well, let's, let's. The applicant's position is that while Mr. Zinder indicates, yeah, he's providing some parking for his employees, and it may be at the Avalon Bay Garage, or it could be another garage in town. Um, I believe the applicant would say they are looking for a variance from all obligation to provide onsite, offsite parking. No parking. Um, in terms then of if the board were to say, no, I'm free, we can't agree with that, I think we would have to look to our traffic engineer to help us calculate then what is a reasonable amount of parking? And if it's going to be provided offsite, where is that? Because I know uh, the planning board approval for Avalon Bay and the garage did indicate that the garage could not be used by a developer to satisfy another developer, I mean, uh, for their offsite or their required parking. And I I I believe that's because the concern was they didn't want to fill up the Avalon Bay Garage, that there might be additional demands or requirements. So that was not something that would be available to a developer unless they went to the planning board and said, no, no, I I I would like to use some of it, here's why. There's not much demand, et cetera. So it's not that the applicant wouldn't have some relief. Um, it's just that if the board's position is additional parking is needed, and since it can't fit onsite, I guess even if you make the building smaller, uh, less square footage, less floor area, I'm not sure where the parking could go. So this would have to be an offsite requirement that's imposed on the developer. If it's the Avalon Bay Garage, then there's another piece to that, which means the applicant has to go to the planning board and say, look, this is what we want to do, and this is what uh the zoning board has advised us uh, that they feel is necessary. But in terms of the number, yeah, we we need some calculation for that. And I think we'd have to look to our traffic engineer to uh help the board calculate that.
Derek, do you have anything to add on my question?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Um, I mean, I, part of it's common sense, you know, um, I think by the nature of the laundromat, people are not going to drive to that laundromat. Um, there may be a few people that do, and they'll they'll park at the garage across the street. Um, so that that, the laundromat will either work with a parking that is not there, or it won't work, and then they'll have to return to this board for some other use. Um, the variances run with the land. I think Josh is, you know, he's given us a good, he could have twenty employees, he could have twenty parking spaces. Um, if the parking spaces disappear in the the Avalon Bay Garage, then they'll have to go somewhere else. And and that could happen. I mean, we can't tell the future. There's plans for the Affordable Housing Project on Franklin Avenue, um, which, who knows where their parking will be. Um, then they would be forced to park downtown um and have to walk, which is about a fifteen-minute walk. So variances are tough, it's, there is no ability to really create parking on the site, or they would have done it already.
Right.
And there is no place that I can see that is really sometimes boards feel better, like we used to say, oh, you can park on the front yard of the guy on Hodge Road who owns the Panera Bread store, you know, and that's just unrealistic. I mean, it doesn't happen, it's impossible to enforce. So I think you have to look at this a- and take the totality of all the testimony, and and you got to either grant a variance or or not grant it. Um, or, you know, the building gets smaller, it's it's that simple. Um, and I think you've heard extensive testimony. Um, it's just a tough call at the end of the day. It's it's a variance, I don't see any other way. Uh.
Yeah.
The only way you could ameliorate it is if there was somebody that would deed restricts parking spaces for them, that's within four hundred feet of their site, and there is, there aren't any. So uh, it it's a tough call. I wish I could give you more guidance. I I'm throwing a lifeline out to Justin if he has anything to offer, but it's just a, it's a tough call. And uh, you know, you have to, it's like all these things, whether you use variants or all, any variants, you have a to balance the good with the bad. And at the end of the day, does it tip one way or the other? And I think you have the investment in the neighborhood, you have the uh laundromat, which I think you've heard testimony from, um, that it'll be hopefully a success. Um, the architectural design, I find, you know, I like it. Um, so the rest of the variances are, as they said, technical in nature. The big one is the F A R and the parking, um, and they're kind of related. Um, so it's a tough call, and uh, there's no magic bullet, you know, you just have to reach some kind of consensus with the board.
Yeah, thank you.
If I could jump in for a minute, I I I think the design is intriguing. I really kind of like it. I like the way it fits into the neighborhood. I'm very troubled about the parking because I don't, not the onsite parking, who I think people who park there will figure out how to get in and out of those spots. People do that all over town. The lack of parking is is very problematic, like Michael said. But I think Derek's also correct. Either we think it's a good project for the neighborhood and the community, or we don't. People who, you're gonna have to find places to park, are just gonna have to find places to park, if we believe that. I happen that my doctor's across the street from them. And I usually have appointments in the afternoon. I've never ever not found a spot on the street uh directly across in the late afternoon, so who knows? But I like the project, and I think I'm going to support it. And I think we we just have to bite the bullet on the parking, even though I don't like it.
Well, I hear you. You know, my concern and I can't say, I I did come up with some kind of, you know, pencil methodology on how many spaces should be needed in the garage. Um, but, you know, it's it's real, it's not real subjective. I think it's a good methodology. But I I come up with with fifteen to eighteen, factoring in his employees going up to the twenty or so. Um, but that's, that's my thought on that, and so much has been made about the garage being the lifeline, the 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 life buoy. And 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 we should, you know, part of our approval should be based on the fact that it's there. And it's highly, you know, high percentage empty. You know, um, it then gets to, besides what is the number? And maybe we never cross that bridge based on what some people have said, you know, including Derek, and we bite the bullet. Um, but it would be nice to lock it in. And, because once the building's built, the need's not going to go away. And if it needs eighteen in the garage, it's going to need. That's it.
Yeah, no.
It it does seem to me that the that we're, that to come up with numbers could just be a deal breaker, because I don't know where the new parking spaces could be put. And also, the main new use is, it seems to be people who don't have cars. So.
The applicant has told you where the parking spaces will will be found. It's in the garage.
Right.
We've been told that over and over again.
But you you've said that the main use, I mean, the the board is viewing this as the main use is the laundromat. And that may be the.
That's not what I said. That's not what I said. The new, the main new people coming to it, it seems to me, will be those people who've been, who haven't been coming, who haven't been going elsewhere with cars. They've been going there by bike or on foot or with, you know, the the laundromat. They're not going to suddenly start showing up in cars.
I think there's.
But I I I mean, to to.
I mean, I know by the regulation, by the ordinances, there are supposed to be a s- a set number of of parking spots, but I don't, this is kind of a unique, this is a different situation. It's also kind of looking at a area, you know, like the this is not a suburban, this is kind of, it seems, if I understand it right, because it's in the zone that it's in, it's it's being um treated as though it's like a suburban area rather than a walkable area. So so it's not being um assessed properly, in my opinion. We we're trying to meet a standard that doesn't actually need to be met by the probable use. And of course, we can't, any of us predict the future, but I think that um, there are a couple of factors here. Number one, the people who are going to be drawn there are the ones who've been going elsewhere on foot or on bicycles, pulling wagons. They're not going to suddenly start driving there. I think we're very, so oriented to everybody having a car that we just keep sort of thinking, defaulting to, we have to provide space for cars. And maybe we'll cut it back a little bit, but we have to provide space for cars. I I I just think we, this is a situation where, you know, I could be proven wrong, but it seems to me that there are several variables here that that just would argue against doing that and just I I I don't, I don't think the need's going to be as high as everyone might think, or that the ordinance would require.
I think Michael's saying there isn't, you know, if you look at the strictly the ordinance requirement of fifty-three spaces, that's that's not the the true variance number. The variance number may be less, like George Jacomar said, the laundromat would probably be like five spaces with a I T E, but based on the location, it'll be less. And I think there's an element of truth in that. I mean, I think Josh is a businessman, he's an architect, he's been doing this quite a while. He's willing to invest millions of dollars into this site, and it's got to work. So. He's willing to invest millions of dollars into this site, and it's got to work. So, I mean, I don't think that his office requires thirty-seven spaces, and that's what's in the ordinance as we have it now. So I think the same with the laundromat, it doesn't require the ten spaces. They're both going to be kind of affected by the market. Um, I think Josh can manage his parking, his staff will have to deal with that, and that's something he's going to have to deal with. But if you're going to come to that site, I don't think your visitors, how many visitors do you typically have in a week, Josh?
One, most two. I mean,
Are they groups of people like a, you know, a couple of investors or?
More often than not, it might be a couple, you know, who have a house or or one person who is doing a a project, you know, on occasion. Maybe once a month we'll have like three or four people come for a meeting kind of thing. Um, but often that might be in the evening when nobody else is in the parking lot too.
So I I think, as I said earlier, the laundromat's either going to sink or swim based on the neighborhood that you know, those people that use it. If you have a car, it might be easier to go to the shopping center and park much closer than you can park to that laundromat than you can at at this site. So I think the board has to just kind of consider all the testimony. We've heard extensive amounts of testimony. We've we've heard studies and um you know, I don't think it's fifty-seven spaces. There's a variance, obviously, but uh I don't think it's that that number. It's probably less than half of that, I would, I would guess, but.
Steve, are we in a position so I could make a motion?
Once again.
Hell, we've been talking about this for
We agreed to go go through the variances one by one and get them knocked out. You're jumping to the end again.
Stephen, as as the person who drafts the resolution for your consideration, if you don't go through these variances,
Okay, that's fine. I asked the question. I asked the question, are we in a position to make a motion? Evidently we're not. So let's go through the variances one at a time, but.
Okay, let's do that now. I wanted to have a little discussion first, which we've had. Derek, let's start going through them.
You're muted, Derek.
Thank you, sorry. Um, floor area ratio, uh, the requirement is point six and the proposed is point seven three six. Um, the existing building is twenty-five hundred fifteen square feet. Um, the proposed building is seven thousand um two hundred and thirteen. And that's a D variance requires five affirmative votes. And as we've discussed many times, it's not that the site is uniquely suited for the development, but that it can handle the added intensity of development. And I think Michael bought up parking is, they're kind of related, so.
Wanna just go through these and then we'll discuss each one when we're about to vote on it?
Okay, um.
Okay, the second one.
Uh, conditional use authorization, in accordance with section ten, T ten B two eighty-seven, all the required parking off-street parking areas shall be located on the same lot as the building which they are intended to serve and shall be readily accessible to it. Where it is impractical to locate all the required parking areas on the same lot, they may be located in whole or in part on a nearby lot, provided that a conditional use approval is obtained in accordance with the provisions of Division four of this article, except that a conditional use approval need not be obtained for parking pertinent to a single-family house. Such parking areas shall be located within reasonable distance of and shall afford safe access to the buildings they are intended to serve. No parking area shall be situated as to create a traffic hazard for either pedestrians or vehicles. Legal assurance, acceptance to the township attorney, and except for single-family homes to the planning board, or in this case, the zoning board, shall be provided by the applicant that the required parking areas will be continuously available. As the applicant is proposing the one off-street parking space to be shared with the adjacent residential lot, conditional use authorization is required. Um. The applicant, uh, you know, should, if it's approved, they would follow up with the deed and uh the access agreement, easement agreement.
Okay, next.
Uh, minimum front yard setback, the requirement is ten feet. The uh proposed is seven feet five inches, and that's to a retaining wall that provides access to the front of the building. The retaining wall is greater than six feet six in height, it's considered a structure and must meet the setback of the zoning um section. The next one is ten B two forty-six, maximum building height, requirement is thirty feet, proposed is thirty-one feet ten inches. How uh the proposed addition matches the roof elevation of the existing building. However, as the proposed addition is located at a slightly lower elevation than the existing building, the average height of the proposed building is lowered for the purposes of calculating building height. And as such, the height of the existing building prior to construction is calculated at thirty feet seven inches. So there's uh a one-foot-ten-inch variance for height. It's not a D variance, it's just a C variance. Um, ten B three oh seven, the required landscaper buffer strip at the back where the parking spaces are, the requirement's fifty feet. A proposal is four feet along the uh western lot line where seven exists currently and zero exists on the southern lot line where no buffer currently exists. Um, the next variance is T ten B two fifty-five point two, maximum width of a driveway, um, requirement is ten feet. And the coupling of the two driveways with the adjacent property owner excuse me, creates a lot with a, or a driveway width of twenty-three point five two feet. And then we have the parking variance, uh, ten B two eighty-two. Uh, fifty-three spaces are required per the ordinance. And uh, seven actual spaces are required, but ten spaces are counted with the E V charging. That's counted twice per municipal land use law. Um. The last one is the facade sign. Signages for basement-level businesses are not contemplated in the zoning ordinance. And the applicant is proposing an eight-square-foot sign for the basement-level uh laundromat.
All right, let's uh, let's
Sorry, there's two design waivers.
Derek, wait, the the design waivers as well?
Yeah, sorry, I was just getting to that. Uh, ten B two oh three A four, parking space dimensions, uh, requirement is nine feet by eighteen feet. Proposed was eight by eighteen at one parking space. This may change a little bit if the board agrees with their revised, uh then you make a few changes to the geometry of the parking widths back there. So that may change um, based on their proposed design for the relocated ADA space to improve ingress egress out of that back parking area. Um, and the parking aisle width, which would be the area between the edge of the parking stall and the next impediment to getting out of that space is twenty-four feet, and it's proposed here to be sixteen and a half feet. Those are the the waivers. Um. And that's, that, those are the variances.
Okay, so let's um let's discuss each one. Do we need, Karen? Should we? How do we do this? Do we, does someone make a motion? And then we go through each of these individually, or do we discuss them and we really need a motion to discuss them, right?
Since there were different vote requirements on these, and two of these variances require at least five affirmative votes, um, one way to do this might be to consider the two uh the two variances, which are F A R and the variance for conditional use authorization. And then move on to the bulk variances. You could probably do all those, you know, in one vote as well. Um, but I do have one question before we start with motions. Um, there are recommendations in Derek's, Dan Weissman's um, review memo. Uh, we have H P C recommendations. There's P E C memo recommendations. So I'm we, so it's also been proposed by the applicant that if they want to change the laundromat use to another use, they can't do that without further board approval. Um, the applicant has indicated that they will review uh some further uh safety improvements in connection with uh making the accessibility route uh which we say understandable and obvious to someone who's in a wheelchair. And I'm assuming that has to be reviewed with board staff and professionals, so they need to sign off on that. So we've got some other conditions. So if someone's going to make a motion, um I'd like to know, are we building that into the motion?
Of other, uh, just to enter into the record, the applicant didn't state that the lights would be on motion detectors.
Correct. I've got that. Yep. I've already made a note of that. Yep.
Then in the same section, um, ten B three seventeen one, requires a minimum illum- illuminance of two-foot candles for parking lots with low level of activities. The plan indicates the minimum illuminance level is zero point one foot candles within the parking lot. The applicant shall revise the parking lot lighting plan to meet this requirement. I don't know if they have an issue with that. Um.
No.
And the surface water runoff, uh, per N G E D E P best management practices. Manual roof runoff that directly discharges into the storage bed for pervious pavement must be penetr- pre-treated by leaf screens, first flush diverters or roof washers. The applicant shall update the plans to include this pre-treatment. And along the same lines, they should offer a stormwater management maintenance manual, uh, for the staff to review.
No, no objection.
And then we get to the retaining wall, uh, the two-foot-four retaining wall, it protrudes approximately eighteen inches into the public right-of-way along Lee Avenue, and will abut the existing sidewalk. The construction of this wall within the right-of-way will require approval from Mercer County. Staff recommends that the wall be relocated within the property to the lot line and that the sidewalk be widened to meet the proposed wall to improve pedestrian circulation in the right-of-way. Um, so I think the board needs to think about that.
You have the same situation on Witherspoon?
No, no.
The, the
I I I thought, um
Slope, excuse me.
It's Lee Avenue.
I know, but the slope walkways, that whole develop, that whole handicap access per se projects out over the property line.
Uh, a s- a slight part of it does, I I think, right? Yeah.
Plantar and the uh
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep. Good, good catch, Steve.
All right, Mr. DeGresi, what were you going to say?
Oh, no, I I was just asking for clarification like you just did. So um, um, my only other comment was, I don't know if he said it, but we did say we would enter into an easement with the neighbor. I don't know.
Now it'd be de-restricted for perpetual easement? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's what we're
Good. That's what you said. Thank you.
Um, and then, um, the only other question I had, Karen, I think it does make sense to talk about the D variances. But I'm not sure if the um, the second one is actually a D variance. It's conditional use authorization. I don't think it's conditional use um variance. So in other words,
If it's, if it's in front of this board, the reason it's in front of this board is because they cannot meet the conditional use standards. That's why it's here.
I read it, but if Derek agrees, then that's fine.
Well, I have to ask, that's, that was my understanding. If they simply needed it's the planning board that grants conditional use approvals. However, if the applicant can't meet all those standards, then they come to the zoning board for relief. So
I I was just thinking the zoning board has the authority to grant it because all the jurisdictions together, it's a single application. So the jurisdiction is because of the F A R variance, you have a D variance, and then site plan approval, including the ability to grant um, the authorization will also be there.
Derek, I can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry, I I kind of uh thought along the same lines as Christopher, that it was here for the F A R and there was the Board of Jurisdiction and um
Okay.
That was the way I I looked at it.
All right, well then, um. Well, I'm not really sure what kind of variance that is, so I guess we'll uh
I I
Derek, yeah, you're muted. I don't really know what we would call it, so.
Yeah, I think it's just called conditional use authorization to allow us to utilize that one space on two properties.
All right, well, let's, so let's just continue, uh. Okay, so all right, so we don't know yet, what what is the board doing with your comment on H? Steph thinks the wall should be relocated within the property of the lot line. I I thought this had been discussed. And I thought that I thought the board wanted this to line up with everything else on the avenue, but
Yeah.
That's correct. This is the one that uh Dan and Derek reported mine conflicted, but we discussed uh essentially pointing it to council or allowing for it to line up uh now, which is the opposite of what that comment is. And then if count, you know, they'll need the right-of-way agreement.
All right, so that's that second sentence there comes out then, because the board doesn't want that. Okay, and then the pedestrian ramps need approval from municipal council. Applicant to consider striping along the driveway or pedestrian and cyclist safety to the rear of the lot.
Testify that they have diagonal access across the parking lot. So it's not one-sided, I believe. Goes on the handicap spot around the back of the building, then comes across and to the side, public sidewalk.
And I believe the applicant also agreed to work with our uh traffic consultant to add enhanced safety measures. And that's kind of similar to that one.
Okay, and then we're moving on. So this staff comment proposed moving the ADA space to the southernmost parking space, because that would make the shortest accessible route. But I understand the board has said no, they don't want that. So that condition recommendation is off. Okay, I think you've discussed the next comment about the accessible route. It's partially located on the adjacent lot. Applicant has to demonstrate this accessible route on a grading plan. So Derek, they still need a grading plan? Is that correct?
Um. They they have a grading plan in there. I would just ask that they uh make sure it complies with the ADA slopes before it's submitted. Um, it appears to, but uh, that's on page uh seven of twenty-one, the grading plan that shows a hatched walkway across the the dual driveway.
And they they, we've already discussed that they need an easement from the adjacent lot owner.
Mm-hmm.
Then the design, okay, they want a design waiver for the dra- drive all with applicant will provide turning templates. Has that been done?
They did that earlier in the meeting, that George did, uh, he showed both examples of what
Okay, so that's done. So that's no longer a condition. And then, of course, any other required approvals, I think that would remain. And construction cost estimate for anything that's applicable. And then uh, H P C has a variety of recommendations. Not all of which were um accepted by the applicant. So I don't know what the board's thought is on that. I know Elizabeth went through it with you. Um, there's the overhang, and I'm I'm kind of summarizing what's in H P C at the very end of the memo, but there's one, two, three, four, five. Six, I'm not sure that's really a condition. Seven, eight, and nine. So nine is new u- new utility should be underground? Not a problem?
Not with that, no.
Okay. The exterior L D, L E D lighting should be in the warm spectrum.
I'm I'm
Josh, you had a question?
Yeah, just, um, we've had some projects recently that that the utilities, P S E N G refused to um allow our projects to put the utilities underground. So we would love them to be underground. Um, but but it is a challenge with the utility, so.
All right, so u- utilities would be underground if allowed by P S E N G. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then we've got this Okay, and then we've got this exterior LED lighting, warm spectrum, not greater than twenty seven hundred K.
Typically do three thousand, but we'll look at it in a moment.
So that's not really a condition, okay? Uh. I I think the discussion was had about the Lee Avenue facade. And since the board likes the project the way it is. That's, I guess, not a consideration now. Um. I think paragraph six is just a comment about the HPC feeling that the lawn. Was a significant portion of the facade of the house. Um. Same thing again, concerns about the facade. On Lee Avenue. And that it should be pulled back. But again, since the board is happy with the project, assuming that's out. Same thing with paragraph four. Again, this is a concern. About the view. And that there should be an entrance, the northeast corner of the building. And I think that, again, these are all items that. The applicant. Doesn't find acceptable, and apparently the way it's proposed is okay with the board. Uh, relocation of the front porch stairs. Um. I think that's been resolved, I believe. I thought Elizabeth commented that that's been resolved, or am I wrong about that?
No, railings were resolved, the the alignment of the front porch stairs was not physically possible.
Cause of the ADA slope requirements, so we're able to work and address the comments related to the railing.
Okay.
But not to the location. Of um, this, the porch, the front porch stairwell because of the ramp requirement.
Okay. And then the upper floor picture windows, this is HPC recommendation number two. Uh.
I think that's.
They don't like this, so.
Uh, Josh, did you do the black, black trim?
We we changed the the trim on the um. Double home windows from black to to white. Um.
Yeah.
The uh, the upper picture windows, um. Honestly, we haven't determined what the color is. I think we have it represented as a darker color to help it disappear.
Okay, so the upper picture, but but the the. Style of the window is is going to remain, so the HPC recommendation about mullions. Okay, the board doesn't feel that's necessary. And then the uh. The whole issue of the overhang and that it's too aggressive, et cetera. So again, since the board is happy with the design, that's out. Okay, we've already talked the laundromat, that's a condition.
Pull it in. We did pull the roof in a little bit, though. In in response, we brought in, I think it was eighteen inches, right, the roof line? So we did do that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and uh, I'm gonna assume the PEC comments, yeah, they were written in the record. I didn't hear any response from the board, so. The board want to make that, is anything in that that you want to be a condition of approval or?
I would just note that we will, we will work with the landscape architect and the arborist to address any issues in there, which I mentioned very might be.
Okay. Alright, well, since since we don't hear any comment from the board, we're gonna assume that. Um, they don't feel that those comments are.
My my view on that is. You know, they they put the comments in writing. Josh, the applicant considered it. The applicant decided he did not want to make those changes. And, you know, he obviously believes in his design and fine, and. I'm not sure it's up to us to. Try to force him into a design change. Not even a variance request.
So. If someone now wants to make a motion. Since it's the FAR that requires those five votes, if somebody wants to. Move approval of the FAR, that we would say now that.
Uh, Karen, I had, I had two notes that I'm not sure were covered or not. Um, one, we had discussed, there there was a tree in the northwest corner of the site. Uh, that was just erroneously not included, and the applicant said they're gonna keep it there. Correct, Josh?
Right.
Yeah, and then I had another comment that's not, sorry. Another one that's not really a zoning comment, um, it's, but it is an ordinance requirement. Um, that single stall bathrooms are labeled as unisex. Obviously, that's inside, um, but just wanted to note that, because I don't think they were on the plans.
No problem.
Okay. Alright, so if somebody wants to make a motion now. Uh. For approval of the FAR, and I'm gonna suggest that since. If that's approved, it will be followed by. Additional motions for the bulk variances and conditional use authorization. Um. That. They'll all be subject to the conditions that we've just gone through in some detail. Without reciting them all again.
And it would include two uh, design waivers and the preliminary and final site plan as well.
Yeah, but but let's, so we've got a motion. If somebody wants to make that motion now. Um, but.
Somebody make a motion for the FAR.
I'll I'll move to approve the FAR. Um, it's it's a. Well-suited, particularly suited to the proposed use, and uh, I think it can support the um, increased area.
I'll second it. Alrighty, so Claudia, do you want to take a roll call so that we know we've got five votes for this?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then we now need a motion for the conditional use authorization. Um. Preliminary and final site plan approval, the bulk variances, which Derek has um, gone through, and the design waivers. Uh, for the parking space dimensions and the parking aisle width.
We want to do that as one?
I think so, because that that does not require the five um. Uh, affirmative votes, unless unless there is a board member that, well.
Let's see, let's, does someone want to make a motion?
If that flies, if not, a board member can indicate why they, you know, can't vote for that because they've got an issue with some particular. Bulk variance.
Members, somebody want to make a motion? Eve? You want to make a motion for the group, the whole?
You're muted.
You're muted, by the way. Okay, and does someone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Claudia, can you call a roll on that? Well, first of all, wait, excuse me, any discussion on that motion? Okay, Claudia, call a roll, please.
Uh, who moved it?
Eve moved it and.
Bernice seconded it.
Bernice seconded it, yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now what do we have? We have the design waivers?
No, we included that. You're done.
Okay.
That, that, thank you very much for your time this evening. We really appreciate it. I know it was a long path. But we do really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. It's a nice project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're excited, right, Josh? Alright.
Are we really done? I mean, didn't we have, don't we have to vote on the motion for the whole project?
Well, you've done it, Steve, in two portions here. We, the first motion, no, Michael, you're looking like, no.
No, you're right. It's all done.
It's done.
It's it's all done.
The first motion was for the F A R D variance.
With with the conditions that we all went through.
Yeah, and the second one was for all the other relief plus uh, the conditions, um, you know, were incorporated in.
We voted in all the pieces, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you again. Really appreciate it.
Yes, everyone next week. Sorry.
Wouldn't miss it.
Thank you, guys. It's been a rough summer.
Yeah.
Do you want to close the meeting?
Yes, okay.
What's coming next week, Derek?
Uh, seven twenty eight Bun Drive into uh, FAR variance residential.
Alright.
Didn't take more than a month. Okay. Okay, well, thank you all. We got through it, and it's gonna be a nice project. Okay. Alright, we'll adjourn, we'll adjourn the meeting now.
Great.
Have a good night.